We're going to call to order the special major of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and Financing Authority for December 19th, 2018. We're going to begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Mayor Potem Ledesma.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
All right, our first order of business then will be presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. We'll also have the same item for the regular council meeting that will commence at 7:00 PM. And so we have one card, one request to speak. Mr. Castorina, did you wish to speak at this meeting or at the follow, at the meeting at 7:00, if you're in the room?
This meeting.
This, this one, right now? Okay, coming forward. Edward Castorina.
I'd like to speak about the, I guess it was a resolution for the commissioners' meeting on gates and fences. And to me, it is going to be a huge expense if we have to remove our fences over there on the north side. I have two rolling gates, which cost me over $1,800 when I put them in, in '85. They're in great shape, but I certainly don't want to get rid of them. And I don't know if that was your plans through the commission. They didn't want to have anything to do with it. I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren. My youngest were, you know, my great-grandchildren, were about that high. When they were started playing on my tree in front of my house, I shut my gates, and I felt like they were protected there if I went inside. If you take away our gates and our fences, there's not going to be any permission, you know, protection for things like that. You have so many homeless coming up and down the streets on the north side. I can see them looking, some of them, I'm sure they're just looking for a handout or get some cans out of my garbage. But then you see some pretty roughing guys, I've seen a guy down there with a knife about that big, attached to the side, looking at one side and looking at another for an open Fences really mean a lot for people on the north side, and they can't bear the expenses of replacing them. A lot of people, maybe some can. RVs, you want, what, another 15-foot easement? Is that from the street? Is that from the sidewalk? There's so many people there that aren't on the upper rung of economy that are going to be hurt by that. They poured nice cement driveways so they could put their RVs out front. That's going to hurt them, too. And it's a durable fence. The wind goes through it. The aesthetics I like, you might not like, but I like them. A lot of people do. It's their protection. It's the old lady on the end of the street, that's in her 80s, that has the fence out there and a dog in the front yard and lives right across from the school. Kids can be knotheads sometimes. You know, they get in your, in front of your house, you know, might do something. It keeps the homeless out. There's a lot of reasons that should not go forward, and I just wanted to let you know about how I felt and a lot of my neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Castorina. And that's on the regular agenda for the, for the meeting that commenced at 7:00 as well. So the council will be having a complete hearing following the work of the Planning Commission later this evening. All right, so with that, then, we're going to proceed to item two, which is consideration of Resolution 18-79, accepting the official canvas and certification of the November 7th, 2018 election, and declaring elected Christopher Cobaldan mayor, Christopher Ledesma and Martha Guerrero council, and measure and approved by voters. Madam Clerk, do you have a report on this item?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to report that West Sacramento enjoyed a voter turnout of 61% this year's election, and that the 43% of people actually voted by mail this time around. And we had a great, great counting policy with Yolo County, and everything got in on time.
All right, then. Is there any question or debate? Is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, seeing no debate. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. The motion is adopted. So we'll now proceed to the swearing-in of the newly-elected officials. And I believe I'm up first. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, you are. First, we're going to be swearing in Christopher Cobaldan as mayor, and performing the swearing-in ceremony for him tonight is going to be the Chief Justice of the California Supreme Court, Tanney Cantil Sacaua.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Christopher Cobaldan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm now about to enter.
Congratulations. (Applause). Certificate of election for mayor of the city of West Sacramento.
Okay, next up, we'll start up with council member-elect Martha Guerrero, and she's going to be sworn in this evening by her daughter Eleanor Sanchez.
Repeat after me. I, Martha Guerrero, do solemnly swear.
I, Martha Guerrero, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will.
Well.
Well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(Applause).
Would you like to take your seat up at the dais? Okay, and last for this evening, but certainly not least, is city council member Chris Ledesma, who's also going to be sworn in by his daughter Elena Ledesma this evening.
(Laughter). Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Aye, Christopher Ledesma.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear full, I will bear full, I lost it.
Bear true faith.
I'm blaming this on Vegas. That I will bear full faith in.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitutions of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well faithfully discharge the duties I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(Applause).
All right, now, we're going to turn to the, to just remarks by newly-elected members, and so I'd like to invite our newest member, Councilmember Guerrero, to make any remarks that she might like to give of her election.
I would first like to thank my family for all of their support during this election, this election, this campaign. It was, it was a lot of work, and they've been there with me and stuck it out, really, and worked a lot, sacrificed, and did a lot of hard work. My little grandson, Cam, you know, walked along with me and did an incredible job, and so he's definitely a trooper for them.[864.12][864.12](Applause). There are others behind the scenes that, that helped me. Did a lot of work. Dwayne Wilson here, he helped make sure that, you know, things were kept on track, and his expertise was, was extremely good. Want to also thank the voters for putting their confidence and trust in me. I will, I'm very fully committed to ensuring that what we need to do here on city council provides the transparency and accountability that I was committed to provide. Public safety is going to be my priority, and I'm very grateful for the firefighters and the police that are here today. They have done a tremendous job in our community, and I'm going, and I'm committed to making sure that all of their needs are met. And there's the, the whole firefighter team here, and doing what I have done lately is going out and doing ride-alongs, and I continue, we'll continue to do the ride-alongs to learn more about all of what's going on in our city. And just looking at the various needs, as I went around and had conversations with our community members, there are areas of early education, after-school programs, public infrastructure, public safety, and a number of other needs, making sure that we have healthy aging and other community programs. There's just a number of areas that we're going to be addressing, and making sure that we're also fiscally accountable for things that we put money in and prioritize it on our public infrastructure. I appreciate all those that have endorsed me. There are quite a few endorsements that I received. And our newly-elected supervisor, Gary Sandy, was very supportive early on. Our newly-elected Sheriff Tom Lopez was very supportive. Our Assembly Member Kevin McCarty and Senator Richard Penn, very appreciative for what they've done to support me as well, and the conversations we had, and I'm committed to working with them, to making sure that our city receives the support that they are able to provide in moving our city forward. Their plans for the future are to make sure that we're thriving, to make sure that the residents get everything they need, our working population. And also, the other strong supporters who helped me out on the field, the Central Labor Council, Building and Construction Trades, iron workers, sheet metal workers, plumbers and pipe fitters, and carpenters, and all of my family and friends here, who are sitting here with me, who are out there working hard and making sure that we got, you know, the message out. And that's a lot of hard work, getting that message out, and they were out there pulling for me, and I'm very appreciative. Sally, my fellow local mental health board member, it was, you know, helping out in a way that, you know, helped me to understand what, what we need to do to help others understand. And Davis City Council Member Lucas, thank you so much for your support as well. And also, School Board Member Norma Alcala, appreciate all of your support. And Alfred and Manuela, thank you so much for your support out there. And we will continue to work together, and especially the schools. Our schools are going to be struggling in the next few years. So wanting to work with the school board members, and Don Stoffer, who's here, wanting to work with you, and making sure that we can provide the support in ways that, you know, I know the schools are going to be struggling, but with my expertise on county and local government, in making sure that we can bridge some of the gaps for our students. So I will continue to work really hard in making sure that all those things get done, and I'm very appreciative for your support. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, Councilmember Guerrero, on your election, and to the mayor, congratulations to you as well. It's, it's an honor and a privilege to be servant on this council and with all of you. Look forward to the next four years. For the voters of West Sacramento, I just want to say thank you for once again entrusting me with this privilege and honor of serving on your city council, representing you, and representing you in all our interests and on decisions, and on the various boards and commissions we, we sit on as part of this council. There are a lot of challenges that this city has faced. What I've learned in my first eight years in this job is that you need to be prepared for the inevitable ups and downs that a city has. There are challenges facing us every day, whether they're fiscal challenges brought on by the state or our national economy, challenges from our federal administration, challenges from the state and the new rules they put on. Those are all things we have to face, and I thank the voters for seeing the work we've done the past, at least my last two terms, on the eight years, on trying to make sure this council can continue moving forward, make sure our city moves forward, and moves forward for everyone. It's something that I take a lot of pride in, I take a lot of, put a lot of work into to make sure we are addressing these issues as best we can, and keep an optimistic view of going forward. And that's the really tricky part, for at least me, for us, is to try to stay optimistic, but we have a lot to be hopeful for here in the city. There's a lot of good things going on, but we still have a lot of work to do, and that's the reason I ran for a third term, is to make sure we can continue doing that work that I could do in my part on focusing on issues like our budget and our fiscal issues that we have in the city, making sure we work on transit. I see my partner here, Councilmember Lucas Farrar from Davis, we serve on the Yolo County Transit Board together, look forward to continuing that work, as well as partner some City of Sacramento, Councilmember Jason Eres here, continuing to work on transit issues like the streetcar and other items, and together working on a very important issue, which I'm pleased to be on, which is, which, thanks to the mayor's appointment on the Commission on Climate Change, which is a huge initiative that this region is taking up. All those issues are important to all of us in West Sacramento, and I promise to work, continue to work hard. I want to, also, while we're here and bringing up the hard work, I want to thank my family. You met Elena, who has been such an inspiration to us for the last few months, during the campaign, but would be remiss without thanking my other daughter, Izzy, who is in high school, and during the campaign missed maybe a few tennis matches of hers this year, but thank you, Izzy, for all your work and all your patience with me. And to Maria, my wife Maria, thank you for all the support and love, not just this election, but for the past eight years and the years that I sat up here as part of the Planning Commission. Thank you all. And to the voters of West Sacramento, you can thank two other people for instilling me what I think is the work ethic that I've had here, and they're here tonight, and I couldn't be more proud to have them here. My mom and dad, Augie and Pat Ledesma, are here tonight. Thank you.[1302.15][1302.15](Applause). The work that goes on in the city, at least from my perspective, it's, it's hard work. We have to dig in, get into issues, work hard, and see them through, and I got that work ethic from those two people, who instilled in me early on, do the right thing, do your job right, or don't do it at all, right, Dan? And, and everything else that comes with it. They also told me that in times when your community is faced with challenges, it's time for you to step up. And I think last year brought me to the, this past year, as we faced challenges in this, in the city, and our own residents faced, whether it was immigration issues or others. My father came from a family of immigrants, and, and it was time to stand up, so he's been an inspiration to me, as has my mom, so I thank them for all your inspiration, and to the voters of West Sacramento, again, you can thank them for instilling that in me, and that's what I plan to carry on the next four years. So to the voters, thank you again. I look forward to the next four years, working extremely hard, continuing our journey in West Sacramento, to be in the place that we all aspire it to be. So thank you very much.
I first want to clarify that the Chief Justice of the California Supreme Court is not my daughter.[1397.41][1397.41](Laughter). She looks, she looks quite a bit younger than I do, but first, I want, she's had to, she's had to go. Apparently, there's other things that the Supreme Court does than swearing in small city mayors, but I'm, I'm very appreciative. The Chief Justice is the highest-ranking Filipino-American in state government, and our city council, both Councilmember Roscoe and I are both Filipinos. This is the most Filipino, not Filipino, city in, in all of California. We beat out Vallejo and Union City and other, other places, and it is reflective, in some ways, of just the remarkable diversity of our community, and of our community's leaders and activists and actors, and the journey of this city. I feel tremendously blessed to, not, not mainly to be mayor of this city, but to live here, and to be able to go through life and on this journey with such a ridiculously diverse group of people, who have so many varied hopes and dreams, and sometimes pains, and believe in each other, and come together, and do a little bit of live and let live, and, and have hoped and worked, done the hard work in order to make our city something really extraordinary. And I've been to a UN session earlier this year where West Sacramento was featured, but you don't have to go that far. You can go to Rancho Cordova, or Winters, or Woodland, and here, people who don't live here express their admiration for this city. Not just, not the city government alone, but the city, what the people here insist on, but also what they're willing to work for, and how they're willing to support one another, and it is a beautiful thing. It's something extraordinarily special. This was a campaign where it wasn't easy for a lot of folks in our, in our community, and for those who, who heard that, you know, some of the comments about whether, whether we could have a mayor that understood real families. I want you to know that I understand real families. Most of the people in this room, I think of as my family. I've cried with them, I've laughed with them, we've been there for each other, and throughout this community, there are people of all different kinds, all different types. There is no such thing as a real West Sacramento that is different or better than anyone else. This is a city that is inclusive by accident, by nature. We don't, we didn't adopt a policy five years ago saying our intention is to become the most, you know, the most diverse city council and have the most diverse citizen leaders or any of that. We didn't do that. We, the voters here just, on their own, accidentally, one at a time, said, well, you know, I don't care if that dude's gay, I'm voting for him. I may not, at the time, I may not like gay people, but I don't, I'm going to vote for that guy. And voters here who said, you know, they were going to, they were going to elect now an all, a female majority to the West Sacramento Council for the very first time. When I was elected to the city council, there were no women on the city council. Cindy Tuttle had just left office, and there wasn't a single woman on this council for years. City council that has the, the most ethnic diversity of any council in the region. And again, not through some campaign, not through some set of activism, just the regular daily choices of people, of the people of West Sacramento who, who, it's not they look past all of the diversity, they, they embrace it. And that's an extraordinarily special place that we have the, we have the opportunity to inhabit and to create together. So I'm, I'm very glad the campaign's over. I think most of the community is. But it was an example of, at its best moments, it was an example of what makes this community so strong. Just the, we always have contested everythings, where, where people come out and they, and, and put their life on the line, and their reputation on the line, and their family on the line, in so many different ways, and campaigned for their vision of the future. And more than any other place in the region where there's all these uncontested elections all the time, here hardly ever, hardly ever, because we always have, we're always debating something in West Sacramento, and this election was no different. And I want to thank and congratulate Councilmember Guerrero, but also the candidates for council and mayor that didn't prevail. Despite all the challenges of the election, this was, this was a hard-fought campaign, and people poured their heart and their soul into the future of the city. And without people willing to step up and do that, and I, and I do worry that sometimes it gets so, it gets so nasty that, that good people don't want to put themselves out anymore, this year showed that even though the world is tough right now, and civic discourse is tough, people were still willing to put it all on the line in order to serve their community, and, and I think that is one of the hallmarks of the city, and it's one of the reasons why we've continued to progress, even in the face of overwhelming odds against a city like ours with all of its deficits and its challenges and its history and everything else. We've continued to move forward. Democracy is not just about us each individually saying, I want my government to do this. Government doesn't work for me. It doesn't work for you, or you, or you. It works for us collectively. It's about all of us. It's not, it's not Amazon, it's not Yelp. We have to do the work. So in a democracy, we don't get to just vote for the one thing that we want, and then say, well, that's your job, government, to do it. If you vote for more, more infrastructure, you got to vote for the money to pay for it. If you vote to open up development somewhere, you got to sit through the traffic. We all have the, we have to make those choices together. It's wise, local government is local government. And so much of the national politics has changed to where people just think they can shout opinions, but that's not what government is, and it can't be what democracy is. Because I don't work for, I don't work for the people of the city. I'm a resident and a neighbor, just like when Councilmember Roscoe works at the snack bar at Little League. She says they're volunteering. We're mostly, and we get a step in here, but we're mostly volunteering to help our community, and so are the residents who serve on commissions, who are working in the Booster Club, in Historic Society, in the Library Club, or the Moms Network, whatever it is, that's what's making our community wonderful, and we have to do the work to make it better. And democracy means governing together, and governing for our, the collective us, and for the future collective us, for the littlest among us, for the most voiceless and most powerless among us. We have to step up to do that. And maybe this election always didn't live up to that, and may, and I hope we will do some soul-searching as a community and as a country about what our, what our responsibility as voters and citizens is, to think about the big picture, and about each other, and about the trade-offs, and about. the trade-offs, and about governing and what it really means, and not simply demanding one outcome, but really believing and doing the hard work. So everyone in this room that I, that I see, I know virtually everyone, and I campaigned with and against many of you, and thank you. And thank you for making this, this community what it is. I am extraordinarily excited about the next, the next two years with this, with this council, with the staff, and with the people of this community. I look behind John Robinson and Ryan Harrison and Jose, and at the, at the, at the folks who have served this, this city over the, since incorporation, and Mike McGowan, the very first mayor of West Sacramento, is here, Oscar Riegus, who served on this council for 13 years, and, and then succeeded, former Mayor McGowan on the Yellow County Board of Supervisors, and all those folks up there. We have been blessed with a, with a long stream of elected officials in this community with a variety of backgrounds, some with a doctorate, some with a law degree, some proudly finished high school, and I hope that their, their children will get to the next, to the next stage. Of every background in the city, we've been led by folks who believed and, as Mike McGowan likes to say, people who bleed West Sacramento first and foremost. And I'm committed to, to keep bleeding for our city, and I know that this team of folks is too. One other thing, just for the staff of the city of West Sacramento, for those who are here tonight, or for those who see the recording, I know this was not an easy election for many of you either. This was, in some sense, the, one of the first times when, whether or not the city was a, was a good actor in its own community, whether the city was doing the right things, whether the city cared, a lot of things were called into question, and we sign up for that in an election. That's what politics is. But I just want you to know that in every single department of the city, whether you're a parks, parks maintenance worker, a secretary, a budget analyst, or an auditor, you know, whether you're the person that's, that's doing the testing of the drinking water supplies, the water comes out of the river, you are all essential to the success of this city. And whether you're part of the campaign or not, you should know the people of this city believe in you, and they're, they appreciate the work that you're doing to make their, make their lives safer and better, bring prosperity to the whole community. And so I know it's tough, but I just want, I know, and I know I speak for all of my colleagues, old and new, when I say thank you so much to the, to the, to the, to the staff of the city of West Sacramento who have worked behind the scenes and invisibly often, they're, they're not always at the press conferences when we cut the ribbon, but they're, they're, and most of them live here, and they're working hard to make their, make their community better for their neighbors. So thank you, and for those of you who are here tonight on the staff, please let your colleagues know that we see you. We see you struggling, we see you dealing with the issues in the newspaper and everything else, and thank you for, for your, for your dedication, for your commitment, and for your service to the city. So with that, we're now going to turn, move to the next item, which is consideration of the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, you have any background on this item, or shall we proceed directly to the nominations?
You can proceed directly to the nominations. As you know, that the, the council fixed a resolution back in 2006, setting the term of Mayor Pro Tem at one year, and so we do this process of selection every December.
All right, so then at this time we'll open nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma.
Thank you. And at the, at the, at the end of my tenure, Mayor Pro Tem, first of all, thank you to the, to the council members who voted for me, and it's been a great pleasure serving as Mayor Pro Tem the last year. But I would be very proud if to nominate Karina Roscoe, Councilmember Roscoe, as the next Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further nominations? Seeing them will close the nominations then and move to a vote. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll. The vote is yes or no? Correct for the only nominee?
Correct. Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandin.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma.
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Yes.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
The motion carries. The first Filipino-American Mayor Pro Tem? No, the third, actually. Mark Montemeyer was the...
No, having the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, yes, I think, no, 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 Mark Montemeyer and I were Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor at the same time. So the city of, where we, there are probably 17 Filipinos living in all of the city. Most of us have served on the city council at one point or another, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you want any remarks?
Thank you all, by the way, for sitting through our remarks and for coming out tonight. I know we all have busy lives and things we want to do. As you, some of you might have seen, I'm in a wheelchair, so I didn't stand up and walk over to assume a new chair immediately because I need my husband to walk me around in my wheelchair. But first off, thank you for being here. Thank you and welcome Martha Guerrero to our council. It'll be nice to have a wonderful, diverse council to work with this year, and I look forward to working with you. On December 9th, I saw something in our community that just makes my heart burst every single time I think of it, and it was people from all sectors of our community coming together for the common goal of trying to teach our kids to do something greater than themselves. And these are people that, again, as Mayor Cabaldin mentioned, you know, on, on either side of the election, yet coming together for the purpose of treating, teaching kids service above self. And in those people I saw on that day, there was no politics, there was no dividing lines, there were no north versus south, or male versus female, or I'm straight or you're gay. It was all about community, and that's why I stepped up to serve this community, because that's what I believe in. I am grateful to be here on this dais to make decisions that I believe are right, to represent the people of West Sacramento. Maybe we won't always agree, but I wholeheartedly vote with my mind and my heart when I serve this city. And on November 20th, my grandmother, Donna Villanueva, passed. She was a fantastic woman and a wonderful role model, and I just dedicate this opportunity to serve this community to her. So thank you.
All right, so we've concluded the business of the special meeting, which we are about to move to adjournment. Upon adjournment of this special meeting, we'll then have a brief public reception where folks can greet and congratulate the new officials and their families and friends, and then we will be reconvening the, the regular meeting of the city council, the first one of this new term, at 7 o'clock, and, and one of the early items of business on that agenda will be the appointment of commissioners as well. So for the motion to adjourn, Mayor Pro Tem Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to take the honor to adjourn in honor of Officer Ronaldo Monterosa.
I'll second that.
Go ahead. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing on that motion carries. So the meeting of this, a special meeting is adjourned in Officer Monterosa's memory, and we will convene the, the regular meeting of the council at 7 o'clock PM. Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to substitute the, the pledge and call to order from the special meeting and proceed directly to Item 1A, which is presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is precluded from, by state law, from having a discussion or, or taking action on items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards, it's available near the front door, and turn that card into the city clerk prior to the conclusion of the staff report on that item. Once the staff report's concluded and the council discussion and the public testimony begun, we don't take additional speaking requests. So if you're here for a particular item, be sure to try to get your card in as soon as you can. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard, and so we ask that folks limit their testimony to no more than three minutes. And also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. This is a regular meeting of the council. The special meeting tends to be a little bit more raucous. In our regular meetings, we do ask that there not be demonstrations or boos, or even applause or other, other, other actions. We try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers in recognition of the fact that many members of the community are not accustomed to the public speaking, and they're here to provide their input and feedback to, in their government, and it can be an uncomfortable experience for folks who are appearing in, not because everybody in the room doesn't love them, but it's just folk, not everybody spends a lot of time public speaking and being on TV, being watched by millions of people at home. So, so we try to give respect here in the room. So with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, and we have just one request, and it's by Edward Castorina. Do you have a new, a new one? Do you have one also, Ms. Flint?
Good evening, councilmembers. It's on.
Yes, it's on.
Can you hear me fine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. I'd like to bring up the idea of a beautification. I've, I've heard that the council is interested in the beautification of the city in different areas, and I would like you to consider Sacramento Avenue. You know, you go down there, go turn around, right, right by Favers, go down a ways, and you take a look to the left. I think we all know what we see. Old dead trees, ditches, bar that hasn't been in existence for at least three years now, I believe. Fenced-off area, the owner hasn't done anything, what, in six, seven years, maybe longer. I know that you put like $300,000 into Denny's to get them started, and a lot of other projects, the barn, and probably other ones that I don't know about. But if you want to start a beautification area, that's the one to pick. I see going down to the other side of town and going to friends' houses, the beautiful cement work, like on the Levy Road, and the big turnaround, and a thousand trees planted, but you haven't taken care of Sacramento Avenue. It's been like that since I was five, six, seven years old in the 50s, and when's it going to change? When are you going to do something about it? We love our town. My dad was a veteran. He used his GI Bill to get a house in Elkhorn Village. My mom worked a beautiful garden, flowers all the way around it. People deserve better than, I keep my house up, I have a beautiful tree out front, nice rolling fences, and I think that that should take some consideration for you guys. It's been ignored way too long. You say this is the council for all of West Sacramento? Then why has this been overlooked for so long? Please consider it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we're going to proceed to Item 1B for its council communications. Are there communications or reports at the time?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Ms. Flint didn't have a card turned in.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm reading it as 14, but it's 1A. Okay, gotcha. Pardon me? I don't...
You don't want to ignore me.
No, I thought, I thought you were coming on a different item. That's awesome.
That's okay. Congratulations to all of you, and I'm happy to say that you'll be seeing me more and more over the next two years. The Kravatsas are still alive. I did pay my parking ticket that I was given, and I was illegally parked unbeknownst to old-time disease, I guess. There was no, no sign in front of me, so I missed the signs that I was illegally parked in a parking lot. But I still have a question. There was a tow truck waiting on the street, and I wondered if that tow truck was for me. And it arrived shortly after the officer came to give me a ticket, and the mayor drove back by after I was given my ticket. So there was a little interchange here, although I must say, this is one of the best campaigns I have ever been involved in. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I met a lot of new people. I befriended a lot of people that have been my friends for years that we hadn't connected with, and, you know, almost half of this community voted for change, and so I thought we had a great turnout, and I think we'll move forward and be able to work together. However, when we can't, I'll let you know. The traffic was eye-opening to me. I stood on the corner of the freeway exit coming off of Highway 50. The commute traffic in the morning and the commute traffic in the afternoon was astronomical. People coming from the I Street Bridge, keep people coming on and off the freeway entrances. I have never in my life seen so much traffic in this town, so I hope we have a current traffic study or are planning to have one soon. I know a lot of it has to do with the freeway entrances and exits, but we can't keep cramming people in here without an evacuation plan that can get people out of the Southport area. I'm not against everything that you guys do. I want you to know that. Three minutes doesn't allow me to always say the good things that I have to say, but I will say that West Sac is very, very proud. We are very proud people, and we are very caring people, and we want to keep that attitude and that vibe within our city. That's what makes us West Sacramento. I was sorry to see that you didn't have a moment of silence for Officer Monterosa. It's a very tragic loss for not only his family, but for our PD family. And City Tuttle is leaving, and I wanted to say personally, thank you for all of your service and for all the help you had with, did with the Little League Park and keeping it what it means to us. So thank you again. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Now, over to Item 1B, communications or other reports. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on December 12, and we approved a contract with HGR Engineering for services to certify the Southport Levy Improvement Project through the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructures and Vision Program. The state's cost share can increase due to advancing contributions by, to state sustainability, so that's good news for us as long as the study goes well. We also approved adjustments in our 2017-18 budget and amended our 2018-19 budget, and we also heard project updates, and we met our new federal lobbyist who's working with us to secure funding. We also received, as has been mentioned before, $400,000 in U.S. Army Corps of Engineers funding for our 2019 work, work plan to initiate pre-construction engineering and design activities, and we continue to work on improving the project's benefit-cost ratio to at least 2.5 in order to better position us for New Start Construction Funding in 2020. I also attended a number of celebrations and events since our last council meeting, including the West Sacramento Police Department's Award Program, which was very inspirational, the grand opening of Wesbeamer Place and Woodland, and the opening and naming ceremony for the Helen M. Thompson Health and Human Services Davis Center.
I have a couple of reports. One is... One is, I reported the last meeting on the preliminary SACAG grants that we were slated to receive. Those have not been given final approval, so those include the extension of the Riverwalk Trail north of the I Street Bridge to the boat ramp, including some improvements, some sidewalk and other pedestrian crossing improvements in the Washington District area that will, for purposes of the grant, will allow folks to be able to continue north even when the water is high and you can't go under the I Street Bridge. But the corollary benefit will be some pedestrian and other circulation improvements in the district itself for safety and also just to improve walkability in that area as more and more shops and restaurants and future housing are opening up in that area. So that was probably the most visible of the grants, but there were several others as well. We did quite well in the SACAG grant round, and again, want to acknowledge our staff team, transportation and engineering and finance for strong grant applications in those areas. As usual, I mean, we apply for grants in those areas where we can win grants, as opposed to, so it's not always what our number-one desire is, but it is what is our top 10 desires or top 50 desires compared to what is the grant-making agency's criteria. And so, and by doing that, by being very smart and strategic about being competitive in those grant processes, we've outcompeted virtually every other city in the region consistently at the regional competition, so that was good news. I also attended the New Deal Leaders Session in Washington, DC, and was presented on the West Sacramento Home Run as one of the innovations in the country, one of the promising innovations for dealing with the massive changes that are underway in the world of work: the gig economy, automation, the displacement of jobs for trade, issues that are very, very, very relevant here in West Sacramento because of the diversity of our job base, particularly in the industrial sectors, those areas that are highly susceptible to automation and to a growing number of gig economy workers, contingent workers that have no benefits because we don't have portable benefit system in the country. So the Home Run has been cited as one of the examples of how cities can better prepare for a range of uncertain futures in work, but assure that universally in communities like ours, young people are developing the broadest range of deep skills that will be, that will tool them up to be adaptive as the world of work is changing. And then we're also part of a coalition that's working on the portable benefits issue because it's the unbundling of benefits and kind of the single-career, one-job with a pension and lifetime health benefits that many in my generation at least have been used to. It's not the norm now, and it's going to be increasingly rare, and so the need for statewide and national system around alternative solutions to benefits that may not be solely employer-based is becoming more and more critical. Then our city was one of nine selected for the inaugural Smart Cities Leadership Institute at NYU, and so we were selected in part because the work that we've already been doing on mobility with VIA and jump bikes and coming scooters and others at the small-city level, but also on the civic engagement work that we've been leading really in the country and in the world, kind of re-envisioning local government civic engagement in a way that is, that's more equitable and inclusive, that's more effective at getting results for citizens, more responsive, more democratic. And the work that we've been doing on Zen City and some of our other projects has been featured there, so we were asked to present a project there. That project was actually selected as the top project among all the cities, the nine cities in the Smart Cities Leadership Institute, and so we're going to have some additional resources to take some of the work that John Robinson and Rob Miller and their colleagues have been leading along with Dean Windrock in our shop around some of this work and bring to bear some of the resources that NYU and several startups and technology partners have as well. So look forward to some additional help and resources to power some of the ideas that the council has outlined in that space. So with that, then, for council assignments, you have at your desk the appointments for assignments of council members to particular external agencies and boards and some of our partnership agencies. So for the benefit of the public, it doesn't have the piece of paper because it's just been provided to the council. I'm appointing to the city-county two-by-two, councilmember Sandine and Mayor Protem Orozco; to the city-school two-by-two, myself and Mayor Protem Orozco; to the Bike Share Policy Steering Committee, myself; Greater Sacramento Economic Council Board of Directors, myself; the Infrastructure Financing, Public Financing Authority Board of Directors, councilmember Ledesma and myself; and in addition, as public member, Russ Lebig of that board; to the League of California Cities, our delegate representative would be councilmember Sandine; the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, reappointing councilmember Ledesma; for the Port Commission, to replace councilmember Johannisson, tonight I'm appointing Mike McGowan. And this is a part of the, when the state legislature transferred the appointment authority for the Port District from Sacramento City and Sacramento County to us, our anticipation at that time was that we would be appointing a mix of councilmembers and other citizens of our community. At the time, the legislature said, "The port is about to go out of business. It's bankrupt. It's a mess. That's why we're giving it to you." And you've made a strong case, city of West Sacramento, that it will, the only way to save it is to have tight alignment between the city and the Port Commission, and so they asked and we agreed that for the initial appointments for the first several years, that I would appoint only councilmembers to the commission. And it's still my intention to predominantly appoint councilmembers, but at this time, I've asked Mike McGowan to serve on the commission to replace councilmember Johannisson. Obviously, he's a former chair of the Port Commission in addition to being former mayor of the city and one of the community's leading advocates for the port and its critical role inside the city and the region. For the Regional Water Authority, councilmember Guerrero; to the River City, and recognizing that I believe, and councilmember Guerrero may have a scheduling conflict, and so we'll need to, as every councilmember always has with this assignment, so I need to work with the Public Works Director, Denex Zombi, about how to actually make that work, but I believe every single person has had a conflict with that board because of when and where it meets. The River City Stadium Financing Authority, myself and councilmember Sandine; SACAG, myself with councilmember Ledesma as the alternate; the Sacramento County Regional Sanitation District Board of Directors, Mayor Protem Orozco with councilmember Sandine as the alternate; the Streetcar Policy Steering Committee, myself and councilmember Ledesma with councilmember Sandine as the alternate; the Water Resources Association of Yolo County, councilmember Guerrero; the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, councilmember Sandine; West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation, councilmember Sandine; the Yolo County Housing Authority, councilmember Sandine; the Yolo County Transportation District, councilmember Ledesma with councilmember Sandine as the alternate; the Yolo Groundwater Authority, councilmember Guerrero; the Yolo Habitat Conservancy, councilmember Guerrero with councilmember Ledesma as the alternate; and the Yolo Sanino Air Quality Management District with councilmember Sandine as the member and councilmember Guerrero as the alternate. I've also listed on the sheet the appointments that we hold that are not made here at the council, but simply for information purposes, so you can see the workload balance that we share across some of our external appointments as well. I will say, in making these appointments, I want to just note that several members of the council this time requested the same assignments, which has been, is unusual, and so the assignments that Mr. Johannisson had in the housing and homelessness space, virtually every single member of the council this time requested them, and I think it marks an important and encouraging, you know, priority that this issue has had, that virtually everyone in the council wanted to have these assignments. I've tried to keep them together because it really is essential. I mean, one alternate wouldn't have spread. Everybody have one, but it's important for us to have a coherent housing and homelessness policy with our partner agencies, and so that's why this is the senior member who made those requests of asking councilmember Sandine to take the lead on the predominance of those assignments. So those are the proposed appointments. Is there a motion or a discussion or question on them?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you're hearing none of those, that motion carries, and again, thank you also to members of the council for just for serving, and I think very few, very few folks know how much, and all the boards that each member of the council serves on, on behalf of the city, it's an extraordinary amount of workload, but they're very essential to us providing excellent services and meeting the needs of our citizens. All right, so with that, then, we'll move to item 1C, which is appointments to boards and commissions. And let me, I want to say first, we received as the hundreds of applications for boards and commissions this cycle. I think an unprecedented number of applications, and most of the commissions, there were six, seven, or eight applicants per seat on the commission, and that's a very strong level of civic engagement and interest. I've spoken to mayors in other cities, and we're way out of the norm in terms of just the sheer volume of folks that are stepping up to volunteer to serve their community. The commissions are essential to our thriving democracy and also to making just good decisions in the city. The commissions are part of the municipal leadership network and also, you know, provide on-the-ground or common-sense connectivity between the silos of the issues, in many cases, a broad range of talent and expertise from their personal and professional lives, and they help assure that we're making the best decisions towards advancing, towards our general plan and our strategic plan and other policies of the city. So hundreds of them, and this time about two-thirds of the applicants were from the Southport portion of the city, and that's still, that's still not proportionate, that's still a larger proportion than there are residents in the city, but that one-third that was not from Southport is actually the largest percentage ever. And I was very encouraged, and I know councilmembers have reviewed the applications pretty extensively as well, applications from every nook and cranny of this city, and really no neighborhood left behind in terms of folks stepping forward and volunteering to serve, and that's quite new as a development in the city, and it's very, very positive. Obviously, with six or seven applicants per commission, the vast majority of amazing West Sacramentoans who've stepped forward to volunteer their time cannot serve on the commissions in this particular moment, and so this has been a tough process in order to get down to these appointments. I do want to emphasize that in the typical customary course of the two-year cycle, that there are, you know, things change. Folks take a job that makes it incompatible with their commission, or they, God forbid, once in a while, they leave the city, or they do something else with their, in their life, and they move on. So it is quite often the case that we are, you know, on a monthly basis, appointing new commissioners, so this isn't the end of the line, but we have to, we have to appoint the 60 or so commissioners at the beginning of the term. The process that we've gone through, the city clerk managed a very aggressive recruitment and on a much earlier timeframe than normal. Typically, we don't make these appointments till mid to late January. It means the commissions aren't getting underway, and the work of the city can sometimes be delayed as a result, and the city clerk and the city manager's office have worked to advance the schedule quite a bit so that many of the applications were received actually before the election was done and allowing us to move quickly to make these appointments tonight. So each of the members, pursuant to our policies, each of the members of the council has made nominations for each of the commissions as well, and wherever possible, about, I think about 80 or 90% of those nominations are included in the appointments that I'm about to announce. Not in every case has that been possible, simply because, although each member of the council is looking at the applications individually, they have to, they do need to roll up to a commission that, in each case, that is broadly representative of the diversity of the city. And so I try to take a look at the balance, and particularly those commissions that have a very specific geographic focus, the Planning Commission, the Parks Commission, those that where the work that they're doing touches very specific places in the city, and it is essential to the maximum extent possible that perspectives from throughout the city be considered. In some areas, overweighted, you know, in particular neighborhoods because a lot of the action in those commissions happens to be in those areas. And so when we get to the Planning Commission, you will see, I've tried to provide greater representation from those areas where the planning, where the major planning decisions in the city have been, because the perceptions about what, you know, what parking standards should look like, or what would it be like to live in a, in a, one of these IKEA-size, you know, micro-units or whatever, that many folks that are in a five-bedroom home on a cul-de-sac, it's hard to imagine that any sane person would choose to live in 200 square feet. So, you know, looking to find folks that are living in 800 square feet, I can imagine it a little bit more. So for the Planning Commission and others, trying to achieve that balance of perspectives so that the insights that the commission are providing are reflective of the broad range of the city and the city as it is evolving and changing as well. We've improved in terms of the gender diversity of the applicants and of the appointments I'm going to make, where it's not, it's not the council. We haven't reached the level that the council has, but we have, the appointments will reflect a greater balance of gender diversity and other demographic dimensions in our community as well. And also, I think for the first time, I'm going to be appointing several, sort of several West Sacramentoans from the millennial generation as the, you know, as the, I mean, they're not the first ones, but it's the first time, you know, a larger number of folks in the next generation of community leaders are being appointed to the commissions because they're a large part of the city, its past and its present and its future, and are bringing a lot of different ways of thinking and ideas about some of these priorities that I think will be useful in the commissions. So I think with that, then, I'll proceed to the nominations. So we've had both, computer issue here, but I also had one at home with a printer, so I'm going to, the council does not have this on paper either, so we're all going to be discovering this together as I pub the Excel spreadsheet in front of me as we proceed. I should say, one last thing, and that is that the council's membership has turned over 60% in the last, in the last four years. So we've had, you know, a healthy turnover at the council level, and partly due to that and partly because of the sheer number of applicants, it is the case that we've tried to also have an equivalent, a level of change in the commissions, so to achieve the same kind of balance that we have here between, you know, stability and change, the same thing at the commission level, so that those are both represented. So in every case, every commission, I am about to appoint folks who have been on the commissions previously, but also because we've had so many applications and so many folks stepping forward that want to serve, it simply can't be the case that all the commissioners from before be reappointed again. And so it's encouraging that 90% of them did reply for reappointment, but it is not possible for everyone to serve again in the same commission, I mean, in the same way. As we've gone through the process of making the appointments and the selections, do want to emphasize one factor that has weighed heavily in this process, and that is community And I was excited to see a lot of folks apply who said, "I want to, I now want to get involved in my community for the first time." At the same time, the commissioners are part of the city's leadership team, just like the members of the council and staff and others, and so it really is vital that the commissioners be out in the community, that they be visible in other ways, that they're, you know, they're in one of the rotary clubs, or in the Chamber of Commerce, or they're in a mom's group, or they are in the Taekwondo, you know, league, or they're working the snack bar at the Little League. It doesn't really matter what it is, but that commissioners are active in some way already in the community and have, by their service, will extend the connectivity between residents of the city and their government, so that local government stays as personal as possible. And as I've described in the interviews I've done with commissioners, that we achieve like one degree of separation, where everybody, every single person in the city knows at least one councilmember, commissioner, or city staffer, so that there's a person, there's a face and a person for frequent casual conversation about what's going on in City Hall and the ideas and complaints and feedback. So with that, let me go first to the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission, and these are not in any particular order other than the order I think that the applications were received by the city clerk's office. So tonight I'm appointing Julia McMichael, Gail Clower, Denise Domke, Christina Jordan, Melinda Garcia, Alfonso Vozquez, Don Chatel, and as the alternate, Alicia Olson. I think the council is familiar with, you know, several of, I think four of them are return appointments. I'm not going to highlight every single individual, but just to give you some flavor of this. So Melinda Garcia is the, she lives on Roger Street in Broderick, and I know councilmember Sandine knows her because she was, if you saw the story in the fall, she was organizing a drive to collect college shirts and paraphernalia for the young people at Riverbank, Riverbank School and trying to start a nonprofit all by herself, and so it's an example of someone in, you know, who's trying to make a difference in the community. Don Chatel, I think most of the folks on the council are aware of, he was the former director, well, he is the former director of Parks and Recreation for the city, and it's been long enough that... And it's been long enough that it's now okay for him to join a commission. So that's Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation. The Board of Appeals, I'm appointing Diane Gould, Ryan Harrison, Shawna Levine, Henry Hines, Sean Arnold, with Rob Gunn as the alternate. And most of these folks are not here tonight, but if you are here and I announce your name, please, you know, stand up or wave to folks here. Both, there's Ryan Harris. Okay. Okay, so Diane Gould, Ryan Harrison, Shawna Levine, Henry Hines, Sean Arnold, and alternate Rob Gunn. Diane Gould has been a member of the Board of Appeals for quite some time. She's the steady hand at the board. I think she was on the board, she was the chair of the board when Councilmember Roscoe was a member of the Board of Appeals. Ryan Harrison is going to be bringing his experience as a planning commissioner and as an attorney in this space to the, kind of the civil procedure of the board itself. Shawna Levine's played a similar role in another place as well. So it's a very strong, a very strong group of individuals for the Board of Appeals. For the Disaster Council, I'm reappointing Al Casciato, and as the alternate, Peter Blando. For the Economic Development and Housing Commission, I'm appointing Peggy Bell, Nicole DiCamillo, Ron Price, and Chris White. Those are all reappointments, but I would simply note that Nicole DiCamillo has only served for 90 days. I think she was appointed as an emergency appointment to make a quorum, so she's essentially new. In addition to those four, Andrew Keigho, Crystal Lee Matter, and Daniel Lars Olson, with the alternate, Adam Reifman. For the Environment and Utilities Commission, Lori Hawkins, Sam Bivens, Dana Cordano, all of whom are reappointments, along with William Natty, Matthew Criswell, Jennifer Green, Jose Santiago Altamirano, and the alternate, Meredith Petri. And I think the council is familiar with several of those individuals. Jose, Commissioner Altamirano has been a member of the Economic Development and Housing Commission. I'm asking that he shift over to Environment and Utilities, we need his expertise there. Matthew Criswell, if you read the West Sacramento Community Discussion Board, he's one of the moderators there, active in the community in that way as well. I think Jennifer Green is also here tonight, and others. For the Library Advisory Board, it's my intention to bring that appointment in January. For the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District Board, Ruel Deanda. For the Parks, Recreation, and Intergenerational Services Commission, Matthew Hargrove, Greg Price, Aruj Ahmad, Danny Sandoval, then Suzanne Reed, who I saw, Suzanne's here, David Jand, Nate Eckler, and continuing as alternate on the commission is Sasha Horowitz. So I believe they're almost all here. So just as an aside, this continues to be the most popular commission in the city. I want to say there's 50-something applicants for this one. Planning is very popular, too, but Parks beats it out. So speaking of planning, planning commission, I'm appointing Bernard at Austin Bauer, Francisco Castillo, Russ Lebig, Andrew Stermfels, and then as new commissioners, Aria Berliner and Brennan Leonard. With one seat still, I'm still completing an interview for the final seat, but Thomas Vu is the alternate. My intention here is to try to bring some deep transportation and development expertise to the commission as well. And I believe they're both, Francisco, Russ, Aria Berliner is there, she's, there she is, and Brennan Leonard, and Andrew Stermfels is home with his brand-new baby. So, and then the Transportation, Mobility, and Infrastructure Commission, I'm appointing Alex Hirsch, Vincent Wetzel, Mark Lemus, who is, Mark's here, and I think folks on the council and many in the community know Mark, not from his current work, but from when he was leading so many of the Safe Rites to Schools and Walk Sacramento Efforts partnerships that we were doing. He's also an accomplished, you know, transportation, transportation civil engineer in that space and planner in that space as well. So I had a lot of great background at that commission. Merlin Love, who is not here, Ashley Christman Kaufman, Jamison Parker, Valerie Zimmer, and as the alternate, Ash Rugani. All right, so that's all of the commissions. If there are any questions of council, or if there's a motion to approve the appointments? And as I think I've noted, that leaves three appointments to be made in January. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, thanks, so echo your, a lot of your remarks, thanks to the community members who stepped up and applied. And don't be discouraged if you didn't get on this round, for those at home who are watching. There'll be, you know, more appointments, or as the mayor said, there could be emergency appointments that happen. So, but to all those who are serving, thank you for stepping up and stepping in. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the, and the rest of the council members on a pretty thorough process. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation.
I want to second the motion. I also want to thank those that put in an application, tremendous amount of expertise and enthusiasm, and just their commitment to the community. I'm really grateful for all of the support that the community members are stepping up and willing to provide, you know, time away from their family, work, or whatever that is, to be able to contribute in a meaningful way to our community. Thank you for your contributions.
All right, since we moved in, seconded, there's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Here now that motion carries. Yeah, congratulations, all the new commissioners. And I want to echo what Mr. Ledesma, what both of my colleagues have said about those who have applied that we weren't able to appoint tonight. And I interviewed a lot of people face-to-face, many, you know, those of you in the room who've gone through the speed dating, 15-minute interviews in various undisclosed locations throughout the city. And I can absolutely attest to what both my colleagues have said, just the caliber and the heart and the vision and the ideas of a broad range of applicants. And it was, this has been, there's been a lot of work to do the appointments, and it's just been soul-crushing because there's so many fantastic people that can't be accommodated in this round. But do want to encourage folks to stay active and engaged. And we've also been, you know, been having some conversations with a member of the council about some other venues in which we will be able to bring folks to the table to participate in planning and decision-making and strategy work as well as we go forward. So don't be surprised if you were not appointed tonight and applied, don't be surprised if we reach out and reach out to you at some point soon about other alternatives to contribute. All right, so with that, then, we're going to proceed to the consent agenda, which is items two through 17. And Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, I will need to recuse myself from item eight.
Okay. Are there any items for separate question or comment? And noting that the city manager has provided us with a revised version of the resolution for agenda item number three.
I'd like to poll item number four, seven, 10, and 12. I have some comments and questions.
Four, seven, 10, and 12?
Yes.
Any others? All right, then, item four is consideration of award of a contract with Ascent Environmental Incorporated, excuse me, and Resolution 18-91 approving a budget amendment for the update to the Washington-Specific Plan. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you very much. Hello, David.
Hi, Martha.
Good to see you.
Yes.
I was reviewing this particular agenda item, and I did speak with staff. And, you know, when putting information together and referencing a cost center, I just would like a little more information as we, it's in the recommendation action, and it references a cost center. So I'm not, I know, you know, with more experience, I'll be more familiar, but as we go into it a little more, so that I know where the money is coming from.
Yeah, so the resolution that's attached and that we're asking your approval tonight does attend to get at that, whereas it's the sources and uses. So this was, this is the fund that was, had funds appropriated in it for this particular effort in our budget. And now that we've gone out onto the street and, you know, got the real world, we are asking for some additional funds to be able to complete, to complete that work. So this is Fund 406, and we continue to go come from that and use those funds to pay for this effort. So the funds, some of the funds had previously been appropriated, and tonight we're asking for some additional funds from that particular source. I know that fund has a name, and I'm trying to think exactly what the name of that fund is.
The Community Investment Fund.
It's the Community Investment.
It's the Community Investment.
Yeah, Community Investment Fund. So that is where the funds had originally been appropriated, and so we're asking for some additional funds to be appropriated from the Community Investment Fund tonight.
Thank you, David.
All right, thanks. We're going to actually return to item three, because we have a request for public comment. And item three is consideration of Resolution 18-95, authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transaction and use tax, which is measure N. Laura Jamison?
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to use this opportunity, now that measure N is passed, this would be a good time to maybe start a citizens oversight group for sales tax measures in town. We don't have that, to my knowledge. Sacramento, I believe, is starting one for their new sales tax measure. The city of Fortuna, for example, is a city of 11,000 people here in the state. They have a citizens oversight group for sales tax measures. So now with measure N starting, I think this would be a good time to bring in more community engagement and actually bring in the other existing sales tax measures and potentially even measure G, since that is using redevelopment agency funds. So this would be a good opportunity to have sort of a citizens oversight group on the budgets and financing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item seven is consideration of Resolution 18-80, amending the North Riverwalk Project Budget associated with Reserving City easements on the future California Indian Heritage Center property and award of contract to Wood Rogers Incorporated. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, in reviewing this particular item, I see it referencing that, I mean, I'm very supportive of making sure that we get this particular project taken care of, that it requires consultation and encroachment permits from the certain state and regulatory, federal regulatory agencies to address some of the levy easements and the setback area. And I understand using measure E money for the purpose of, you know, trails and pedestrian passes, but I was also looking at, you know, looking at making sure that we use the money as required for that, and I see a little overlap here. And I'm willing to approve that, but I just wanted to, you know, bring that to your attention. Katie, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand what your question was related to the item.
This particular item, I know that we are looking at making sure that we follow through in the support we receive from the state.
Yeah.
And as we move forward, we're wanting to make sure that the Riverwalk project is continuing on, and we need to take a look at the levy easement to be able to establish the bicycle and pedestrian, and that's what this is about.
That's correct.
Okay. And so in establishing the levy prism, you know, to, with the current design, is there any overlap with, you know, levy, you know, resources and, or resources that could be used for the levy?
So I understand your question, thank you. So we first originally looked at using measure V to pay for this, but measure V's appropriation, the entire portion of the appropriation that was set aside for measure, for measure V for flood protection was, has already been previously appropriated. It was appropriated for the Southport EIP project.
I see.
So there were no measure V funds available for this project.
Oh, thank you so much for letting me know. You're welcome. I appreciate that. The other issue I wanted to raise is the sole-source contracting. There seems to be history here as it relates to the Barge Canal Trail project, so, and for the purpose of my own, you know, background and, you know, just getting, just the nexus between one project and another, if I can have a little more background for that.
Of course, I'd be happy to explain why we sole-source with Wood Rogers. So typically, when you determine what the levy prism is, you are actually going through a levy construction project where you're improving the levy. And so you go through the process that's required to apply the urban levy design criteria for that improved levy segments. You're going to either do a slurry wall, or a setback, or you're going to widen the levy prism. What's unusual in this case is that this is just specifically for the O and M corridor that's on the crown of the trail. And this requires a different set of expertise. When we did the Barge Canal Trail project, it is the same exact level of expertise where you are going to be designing the levy prism for an O and M corridor and not for the actual levy improvement project. When we did a solicitation back in 2017, one firm responded, which was Wood Rogers. And the reason they responded is because they could rely on the analysis that they did in the alternatives analysis report, which they completed, which describes the theoretical improvement to the levy, but not the actual improvement to the levy. So they could rely on their own expertise, where other firms are effectively electing not to rely on the expertise of Wood Rogers, of what the future flood protection improvement will be.
That's pretty significant to me, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the background. And that concludes the question of that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 10, then, is consideration and award of contracted GHD Incorporated and ECorp Consulting for construction support and environmental services for the Rayleigh Stock Improvement Project.
And in looking at this particular project, I, under October 30th, hi.
Hi.
Under October 30th, 2018, we have, I think, Tabor Drilling subcontractor to GHD. How did we acquire, how did we get that particular contractor?
With Tabor.
Under, yeah, subcontractor to GHD, Tabor Drilling. I see a series of, and this is very helpful, just the, looking at the sequence of dates and, you know, what all happened. But I read this particular one and didn't understand, and we can talk about it later if you don't have the answer now. Because as we go look into the analysis, it's an area where, let's see, seeing that it is going, they are going to be used again in the development of this project.
I'm sorry, are you specifically asking how Tabor became a subcontractor to GHD?
Yes. Did they just?
GHD is our design engineer, and they're allowed to hire their own subcontractors to perform tasks.
Okay. Okay, good to know, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, item 12, then, is consideration of proposed outcomes and indicators for the College Promise portion of the West Sacramento Home Run. Councilmember Guerrero?
Thank you very much. And I'm supportive of making sure that our youth have access to resources so that, you know, they have fulfilling lives and careers in the future. And in looking at, you know, the selection criteria for some of this information, or for the youth that are going to be selected to participate, I was looking for a little more information. Is that in a separate report?
It is, yes. So this represents kind of the crescendo of a series of staff reports that have gone to council previously. So it was March 15th, 2017, when the program features and key performance indicators for the College Promise Program of the West Sacramento Home Run were approved by council, which includes the eligibility criteria. But in future staff reports, perhaps staff can include a little bit more context for specific programs, just to make sure that all of council understands the program features and key performance indicators.
Very good, thank you. And also, when I was looking at the area of, under the needs, it provided some good measure, you know, some, what we're trying to accomplish, and in, just in the future, just trying to get a little more of what the gaps are. So if there's a high unemployment rate, you know, and specifically in West Sacramento, what is it that we're, you know, what is our scale that we're trying to, you know, reduce it to, and how are we going to be able to track that? So decreasing the dropout rate, making sure that, you know, whatever we do to achieve that, what is, what is the current problem, and then what is our goal in developing that? So in looking at outcomes, I'm trying to see the progress that is made down the road in the future based on the current gaps we have.
Certainly, and that can be contextualized, too, when this is put together with the other program features, key performance indicators, program outcomes, and outcome indicators for the entirety of the home run and the universal policy document, which should come to council in spring of next year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Sandin?
And while you're up here, Mr. Wimbach.
Committing future staff to give more.
I know, no. I just want to mention again how grateful we've been for your leadership as we've kind of conceived of this home run. You've been instrumental in every aspect of getting this to move forward, and you'll be greatly missed.
Thank you.
Ditto.
I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Ian Lovest.
Yeah, I heard. I heard, and I just, I want, I want to, of course, add my thanks and congratulations. So Mr. Wimbach has been the, for the, since the adoption of the home run, the half-time manager of the nation's most ambitious education and workforce initiative, just half-time. And at the same time, half-time the deputy to the highest maintenance mayor in the region other than Daryl Steinberg, simultaneously. And both of which are, you know, are jobs for multiple people. And it's been extraordinary. I think Mr. Wimbach's been my deputy since the council authorized the position several years ago, and didn't have background in municipal government or in most of the issues that we deal with, had been working to, for, on justice and fairness for coffee producers around the world, and food system revolutions in California and elsewhere, and joined our team, and has had an extraordinary career at the city. And the home run is, it's strange that something of the scope and the ambition and the depth and the likely impact impact of the home run is just one part of the portfolio, portfolio that he's had here. And so, on this particular program, it's astonishing. This, what we are attempting to do is, it's world-changing in our own community. This is, these are the most, these are the most trenchant problems and challenges that we face in our town. It's not, it's not, it's not road widening or other issues that are also important, but it is that, it is that we've had persistent unemployment even with, even with the largest number of jobs per capita in the region. It is that, you know, that the social contract in the community means every, all boats have to rise. And, and that if we're going to continue to be a great attractor, a great place for employers to bring great jobs, and they are doing so, we have to have a local workforce that can take advantage of them and that can, and that can advance our local economy. So what we're attempting to do is no small thing, and most cities don't even try. They just say, oh, that's the school district's job or the workforce board's job. And this council, and then the community, when it voted overwhelmingly for Measure E, said, no, we've, this is front and center, one of the most important things that we do. And so taking that on, and then doing it with a level of discipline and care and comprehensiveness and system thinking around this that you've brought to this work has been essential for its success, both financially as a program, but also in terms of achieving those outcomes. And I know you've brought, the council's been drowning in KPIs and policy documents and what have you, because it's been so thorough. But we will see more, probably more so now that you're, you're leaving us, how critical that policy framework is, and how sophisticated, well-thought, research-based it is, but also how rude it is in what our needs are and our experience and our people are here in West Sacramento. But like I said, it's just, it's one of many, many things. Mr. Winbrot's been one of the leaders in the world on cities tackling issues around food system improvements, you know, hunger, food waste, urban farms. He's been, he's been a major player locally, but also in building partnerships with other communities around the world, around connections with art, around, he organized one of the very first municipal conversations on digital badging at the Microsoft Innovation Policy Center, when I think he had worked here for five minutes. Just all over, in so many different domains. He's a, he's a fixer and a doer and an ideas guy that worked, that I know other people in City Hall love working with. And I, and when President Obama left office, the one call I got from, from the White House, from the White House staff was, you know, they wanted, they wanted to thank me for Ian Winbrot, that his reputation among other cities and among virtually all of our partners, probably all of our partners, is just stellar. So as an ambassador of the West Sacramento values and the quality of our, of our overall team here in this organization, he's just an outstanding exemplar and a big believer and supporter of all of his colleagues. And I know I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss you greatly in the, as, in both roles, but you've certainly earned the opportunity to maybe sleep a little once a week. And I see Caitlin's here, you know, Ian's partner in life, and best of luck to both of you. You've done, you've made a huge difference in our community, and we're really grateful.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to take a moment to pitch my book, How to Manage Up, you know, American Mayors in a City of 50,000 to 75,000 People, coming out next summer. But I did want to actually mention a few staff members, because you mentioned, you know, being a half-time staff member and managing the home run. I was only one member of a team internally, which touched a lot of departments and divisions side of City Hall. And I wanted to start with Justine Jimenez, the Director of Early Learning Services, who's been leading for more than 10 years our work in high-quality early learning. Cindy Tuttle, who's leaving us, who has been managing Justine, but was also fundamental during her time on council in our early learning work. Roberta Rupier, our Director of Administrative Services, who along with Claire Connor, our Accounting Manager, and Paul Bloomberg, our Public Finance Manager, helped establish our college savings account program, which is now available to the public. Leanne Lee, our HR Manager, she has worked with me on a variety of issues, including digital badging, as well as Rob Miller, our IT Manager, for a variety of issues related to our pending data interoperability and warehouse system to store these siloed data sets. I want to thank John Robinson, our Deputy City Manager, who has sat with me many an evening to go through staff reports and to pull at the logical loose threads of some of the policy work that's come before council. And of course, Aaron Laurel, the City Manager, for taking time when he has a very busy schedule to be able to understand this work. And Amanda Berlin, my direct manager, who's just been phenomenal in helping me address issues. And of course, I want to thank my partner, Caitlin. She's an arts educator who's worked here in Sacramento, and she's also been a behavioral analyst with different youth in, in West Sacramento. And it's because of her commitment to young people in our city that has really given me the strength and courage to be able to dive into this work. And thank you all so much.
We're still on the consent agenda. It's, I think, the next is, Item 16, which is consideration of Resolution 18-81, setting the time and date for the 2019-20 regular meetings of the City Council. May I request a public comment from Laura Jamison?
Good evening, again. In the agenda item, I noticed that it was, there was mention of a February 7th and 8th Annual Strategic Planning Session. And I would like to respectfully request that the annual strategic planning sessions are held either here in council chambers so it can be recorded, or if it has to be done in a different room, that it be recorded. I think having the annual strategy discussions available for the public to watch, it's very important for the public to understand where our city is headed. And to have those meetings during the day, for two days, when people are working, most people cannot take two days off work to watch these meetings in person. So I think it'd be very beneficial to have them recorded so the public can watch them at their convenience. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so then we have now before the consent agenda, Items 2 through 17. It will take up, it will take a separate vote on Item 8, due to Councilmember Ledesma's recusal. So if there's no further discussion, is there a motion on the consent agenda minus Item 8?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Mayor Pajama Rosco and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Is there a motion on the second, the second consent agenda, Item 8?
Moved to approve. Consent item 8.
Yeah, okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none. With Mr. Ledesma's recusal and abstention, that motion carries. Item 18 then on the regular agenda, it's consideration of a public workshop on ordinance 19-1, repealing and enacting Title 17 zoning of the municipal code for the zoning ordinance modernization project. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we're going to give the PowerPoint one more, one more try here tonight, but otherwise, you should have a copy of my PowerPoint in front of you in the old-fashioned way.
We do? Do we? Do you have it? No, we don't have one. I believe we have it the old-fashioned way.
Okay.
We got it.
Okay, well then, we have the, we have the semi, semi-old-fashioned way. So again, thank you again for, tonight, we are here for a full workshop on our zoning ordinance modernization project. This is something we have been working on for about the last 18 months, and we recently completed that work with the Planning Commission, and so now we are here to the City Council for your consideration. So just by way of background, coming through this, even with some of our planning commissioners, we did have to do some, start a little bit of education about really what is zoning. Because even though they deal with zoning matters all the time, they don't always, some of the more day-to-day zoning matters don't always bubble up all the way to the Planning Commission. So zoning really is, you know, in plain language, it really describes what people can do and cannot do, or how they can do it on a given pieces of property in our community. And it addresses many issues, some more obscure, some more day-to-day, and I've listed several of the more popular topics that come up most frequently in our community. These are all topics that our zoning code has currently addresses and has addressed since our first zoning ordinance was done in the early 90s, right after the first general plan. And these are very common topics in most cities' zoning codes, not only here in California, but across the country. So coming off General Plan 2035, which the council approved just about two years ago now, we set, we set out a range of implementation measures, and a big one, of course, is updating our zoning code to be consistent with General Plan 2035 and to also implement it. We were seeking to modernize it, upgrade wherever possible. There is various state and federal laws that we must remain compliant with that come down most, most every year. And overall, we wanted to improve its organization, readability, and include a lot more graphics to help explain some of the text in there, which we try to always put in as plain a language as possible. But some of these, some of these concepts don't always translate into the, you know, the most, the plainest language. We, in our view, we aren't, aren't including any, what we call radical changes, but everything we have chosen to do here is a matter to upgrade and modernize and to fully implement our general plan. So the next couple of slides, just want to highlight a couple of key subject areas, especially some things that are new or have changed to some extent. We have included some form-based standards in our code. I would say it's sort of form-based light, but we have included some form-based provisions for new development. As we've seen, many small lot projects come before us, particularly in our urbanizing areas, we wanted to have some better criteria to try to address, you know, the small lots, whereas trying to apply the large lot criteria to small lots has proven very challenging, particularly in the Washington neighborhood. There's a lot more graphics in it, as I mentioned. On the lower right, there's a, trying to, example of trying to help graphically depict some of the form-based matters. And then, you know, design review is something we have always done. Now we are proposing is that, rather than that be a wholly separate thing, if some project needs some other type of entitlement that would go to the Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission would be the design review body also. It has been somewhat awkward when we've taken projects to them and said, well, you can look at the map, but you can't really comment on the, you know, the design of the project, which really is the project, it's not the map. So this was something that was done, found to be very favorable by the Planning Commission. And a few other key subject areas, we've continued to work on updating our, some of our urban parking areas, trying to be cognizant of the various new mobility options that are available now, that were, some of which were not even available a year ago. We want to try to have more overall flexibility. And we've tried, the other areas that we know we need to conclude in here, based on recent state legislation, most, most recently was the accessory dwelling unit. In the lower right picture is an example of what an accessory dwelling unit could look like. New state law went into effect on that this year. And we have, of course, included the, all the other elements that we need to have in there for state law, such as reasonable accommodation, density bonus, et cetera. And I think also a big improvement is on the non-conforming uses section, as we've gotten a lot of good input from our city attorney's office about how non-conforming uses should be treated going forward. So, again, we started this, it's been almost 18 months now. We started off with really evaluating our current code top to bottom with our, with our consultant team on this. And then we started to, you know, make, make the sausage, so to speak, and start a series of presentations to the Planning Commission and community workshops on this effort. And so we tried to break it up for the Planning Commission in a couple of chunks, noting that they would want to do a deeper dive into this kind of work, as is their charge. And so we'll have to give the Planning Commission a lot of credit for enduring several, several meetings on these topics, which admittedly, some of which are a little dry. So, so our next steps, we want to see, see council's input tonight, and that from the public, and so we can ultimately proceed to a hearing. And then once we have our text largely complete, we will be producing a fully interactive online version of a zoning ordinance that will be also readily available on multiple, mobile devices. So I mentioned the Planning Commission, we were before them, I think, at least eight times, and, and plus the community workshops and chamber visits. Some of the most commented topics that came up at Planning Commission were related to residential fencing and RV boat parking, unbundling the parking and animal keeping. We had some proposals related to, specifically to residential fencing and RV and boat parking. Ultimately, Planning Commission did direct us to table those matters and keep our current standards in place, at least for the time being. So that's, that's what they ultimately did, and then voted to recommend that to the City Council at their last meeting in December, December 6, excuse me. So with that, we would like to open up discussion for, I recognize it's a lengthy document, but it does address many of the topics that are in our current zoning code. They've been maybe rearranged and trying to improve overall readability. But that, I'd like to, would like to close my presentation, and I'd be, would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can I just clarify, so the document, the Planning Commission's actions are reflected in the document, or not yet?
No, every, everything that the Planning Commission directed us to do is in the document. That's before each night.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, Councilmember Sandin?
Well, I am excited to see the form-based development standards, even if it's form-based light, because that had been something, I think, when I was on Planning Commission, we were hoping to move in that direction. So I'm, I'm excited to see that, that kind of movement forward. I think it provides some flexibility, but also guidance, and I, I'm happy with that. I'm wondering with regard to the, two kind of tabled by Planning Commission items, when, when typically does this cycle happen again for a review? So if we're setting them aside now, are we, I'm guessing it's not, I'm guessing it's in some time from now?
Well, historically, we have made various, you know, changes to the zoning accord, almost annually, maybe semi-annually. This is the first time we've done, you know, a top to bottom. But we didn't look at things, tend, and I hope we will continue to, we try to stay on the cutting edge and continue to look at our zoning code, at least semi-annually, if not annually. Things always come up that we need to make sure we're accounting for. Some of those grow up, you know, organically. The best example was when all the breweries started to come to town, they grew up organically, so that we decided, you know, then we decided to put that stuff in to be able to accommodate them. So I would, I would hope maybe by this time next year, especially as we start looking at the general plan again, that, you know, we can look at some further potential change, changes. And we also fully admit that, you know, probably after about a year of using this in the real world, we may find some things may not work 100% the way we thought. There may have to be some, you know, cleanup, so we, I fully anticipate that. I feel like we got it pretty good, but if we, I don't know if we got the whole bullseye yet, until we get out there and test it in the real world.
It does seem to me that the kind of exhaustive number, the number of times Planning Commission took it up, as well as public forums and work with the chamber, it seems that that has, as you mentioned, 18 months or so, it's been a long time coming. And I'm not gonna, I don't want to question that, kind of that process at all.
Other, other questions at this time? Arthur, we have a couple of requests for public comment. Let's proceed to those. Thanks, Mr. Tilly. The first is by Rosie Ramsey, should be followed by Laura Jamison. Welcome.
My name is Rosie Ramsey, and I'm kind of asking the same thing about the tabling of a zoning prospect. I'm sorry, I've had a stroke, so I'm a little slower at talking. But I've noticed that, that in one form that I received with the agenda tonight, there was no mention of this quote, "Staff may take up this issue again in a future zoning code review after further research into the county versus zoning action records." This specifically entailed the RV and boat ordinance. And why, that doesn't show up in one under the agenda, but I got somebody, Matthew Hargrove, I got him to send me the, the thing that I thought that I had heard. I would like to know how soon are we gonna have to be on pins and needles? We had over 120 people here that night, just to talk about RVs and boats. And to be, and supposedly there were workshops beforehand. They had a total of 14 people for all those workshops. And some of those were city employees. They weren't people that actually lived in the city. I guarantee you, out of our 120, and there were many more that spoke on different sides, that there were at least that many people interested in this one thing. I don't see that I don't see that, when you have a city surrounded by water, I can't even imagine not having any boats. And when you tell people that they have to get them out of their front yard, when we live in an area that does not have CCNRs, we did not have HOAs, we did not sign up for that kind of thing. We intentionally bought in areas that don't have those things. As long as we're keeping it five feet away from the sidewalk and keeping it nice, I don't think it ought to be brought up every six months or every year, and I don't think that I ought to sit on pins and needles. But if you really want me to, I will get a group a year again in six months or a year. But I don't think that that's a fair arrangement. So, that's all.
All right, thank you. And Laura Jamison?
Good evening again. I just wanted to give a word of appreciation to the planning commission and the planning department for really listening to all the people that spoke during the December and November meetings. I think the public is very appreciative of them listening on their concerns about the fences and the RVs, and even the animal keeping and the campaign signs. So, I think the public does appreciate keeping some of the changes, or not making some of the changes that were originally proposed. So, thank you very much.
All right, and with that, we'll return it to the council. Actually, Mr. Tilly, do you have any additional follow-up information following the public testimony?
Yes. Regarding the RV parking, we are keeping it. Borough is proposing to the council that we keep our standards as is. There's no timetable right now for a formal defined timetable to return on any of these topics. But I would think it could be in about a year plus or minus, after we've had this on the street and used it in the real world, that we may look at some of those topics again. There's, there's no set program to do that right now.
So, a year from now, what would be the, what would we be testing or seeing in the real world that would give us, what kind of information would you have a year from now that would?
Well, you know, for example, some of the form-based stuff, you know, well, after, you know, folks have tried to apply that in the real world and design buildings, you know, meeting some of those form-based standards, it'll be, it'll be to tell us if those really, you know, can work in the real world or not. They were prepared, you know, by an architect that was part of our consultant team, so they had some, you know, design expertise. But there, there may be other topics, you know, that come up where, you know, maybe it could work a little better, or maybe the language wasn't as clear.
I think, but I was actually asking specifically about the RV boat parking and maybe the fences, but the issues where you noted in the agenda, in the agenda report that you might be coming back.
Yeah, the planning commission was interested in potentially looking at these again at some point in the future. We did need, on the RV parking thing, we did need to chase down a little further the magic date of August 23, 1984, to understand the significance of that, because that has been in our code for forever, and obviously, that predates incorporation. So, that was, that will be something we would need to, you know, understand what that, the significance of that date is and what it means. But there's, there's no, you know, burning, burning desire to bring those topics back up. But if the plant, if going through this overall zoning code work, and with, and with the planning commission, you know, something that we want us to look at again, we certainly can, but there's, there's no specific timetable for when we would do that.
Okay. Mayor Tom Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the planning commission and your work, and also the feedback from our community. This was a hot topic in my neighborhood. I happened to be out in my front yard with my children when one of my neighbors came by, somebody I see regularly walking in the morning, and he was alarmed at the prospect of losing the opportunity to have an RV in his driveway. And he came, he was going house to house. He came to our house, because we own an RV, and we own a boat. And so, these are, you know, issues that are likely on my household, but at the same time, whether or not we have resources to move our boat, that might differ from household to household. So, I will say that the complexion of, at least in the state streets area and some of Old West Sacramento, there have been overwhelming alarm related to some of these recreational vehicles that just happen to be the, you know, some people have, you know, saved money for a long time, or spent their retirement funds in order to graduate into a lifestyle that incorporates these, these vehicles. And so, I'm pleased with the recommendation today that planning commission took up and, based on the feedback from our community, and just wanted to relay that, at least for the time being, that seems to be the sentiment from, from my perspective.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, and I also want to echo the sentiment from Councilmember Roscoe, expressing that the planning commissioners did take, I think, the right decision based on the feedback from the community. So, I appreciate that, you know, and I also want to know, you know, from what I've heard from one of the members who spoke, kind of like a timeline, it's, you know, and I will do what I can to do some outreach as well, out to the community, and letting them know if I see it on the agenda, to do some outreach. But if there's a way to, as you have done, community outreach, given the significant feedback, to try to do that again on these particular items in the future, so that folks are aware and can provide some input, so, you know, we can address it in the future.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, though, as well. There, there one area that I, in looking at the denial of affordable housing projects, 17.23.070, just want to add, is there any difference in the denial of affordable housing projects? Is there any change in this particular section? It's hard to tell the changes.
No, that's something, that's something we were largely carrying over and trying to be consistent with most recent state legislation on this.
Okay. And then, on the next section, it's on page 94, 17.30.080, the cannabis, any changes there?
No, that's all verbatim from what the council has approved over the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lidesma.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for bringing this to us, and I know this has been a long process for you and for staff, and getting through this, and certainly get it to, thanks to the planning commission for all their work. And I agree with where they ended up on this as well, on both the fence and the RV park, parking issue. And one area that I wanted to kind of drill down on, because it wasn't, and looking through it, I'm trying to go back to my page, I'm sorry, I'm digital and makes it hard to flip them back. But you mentioned the parking and the unbundling issue. I want to dig into that a little bit, because in the actual report, I'm not going to be able to get back to it, it signifies a lot of, I'm trying to understand what exact changes. Obviously, you incorporate unbundling of parking from, from this, kind of, as this concept and introducing it as part of the plan. Trying to understand what other changes may have been made, and were there other changes? The table in the, in the staff report kind of lines out uses per, the basic parking requirements. Have there been changes in there, other changes?
We didn't make too many adjustments to the amount of parking that's required, per se. We did, other than like in our urbanizing areas, we continue to, you know, reflect things. The unbundling of parking, that's definitely an implementation of a general plan policy about unbundling of parking. So, now, we have a zoning implementation of that. The main thing we have done on parking is a couple of things. For mixed-use projects, we'll exempt from parking the first 5,000 feet of commercial. And then, on the, and we've tightened up the urban district on parking, and some reduced at least parking minimums in those areas. And those areas are generally would be the Bridge District, Washington, and our immediate central business district. Continuing the trend, as we've gone through the zoning code revisions over the years of recognizing the diversity of our city, different parking needs, and then, but nowadays, especially trying to account for the much wider variety of mobility options than there used to be.
Right. And I think part of what, well, this is a need, this is a workshop, right? So, if I can get offline separately, just to kind of articulate those changes.
Yes.
And where they are, and I think I agree conceptually, but kind of need to see exactly what will impact, what changes might be in either the Washington district or in the Bridge District from what we do today. I agree conceptually with the fact that those are the areas where parking and density are kind of, I understand the concept we're after, I just need to see exactly what the changes were, so that...
We can provide that for sure.
Thank you. And then, on the unbundling issue, because you referred to it as, it is a general plan, and in the staff report, we do, you articulate that that's, it'll provide, I'm sorry, I'm not getting to, but I think you said it will provide a more transparent way for residents to understand the cost of a car versus, and their choices that go into it. I think it articulates some of the conceptual parts of what unbundling might do.
Absolutely. It's a much more à la carte, if you will, whereas, you know, we have projects that build amount of parking, you know, you pay for it whether you use it or not.
Right.
And so, now, it can be a little more à la carte. Some of our projects are already doing that, where there is, you know, market demand for, you know, folks paying an additional for parking on top of whatever their monthly rent would be. So, this would then still allow more choices, and if you want two parking spaces, you're going to have two parking spaces, but, you know, you're going to, you're going to pay for those as a separate line item. But if you don't want any parking at all...
You know, supersize it, so to say, right? In terms of your, your... And I think that's just a concept of it, because I think it's just, I know unbundling and parking is just for the average citizen, kind of understanding what is this? It's just, we probably, again, how it's implemented at, even at the Bridge District today, in terms of, what does that mean for the average resident walking in? That, you know, that, I think it was a good description here, but it's so new, and then we're starting to see it, what does that mean going forward? So, again, just, just some feedback on it.
All right. Wasn't me, I promise.
I think someone told me I'm done. So, no, those are the questions I had on parking, so, thank you.
Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Tilly, I don't know the answer to this, so I would need to ask it. Some parts of the city, some neighborhoods have CCNRs overlaid. How does that, how does that comport with the zoning?
Well, CCNRs are private, they're, so they're not enforced by the city. Many neighborhoods have CCNRs, most do, actually, the builders establish them, but there's, unless you have a homeowners association or something equivalent, there's really is no enforcement mechanism for them. So, many properties have CCNRs on them, some of which we may not even be aware of, because they're private. And, but they're, they're not unusual. We see references to them in title reports a lot, but they're, they're civilly enforced, they're not enforced by the city.
Thanks.
So, a couple of questions. On the form-based light, what would form-based medium look like? I mean, what is the, why are we, why are we dipping a toe in and not going a little further? And what, and what is the actual distinction between a more fully implemented form-based code?
Well, it would be, it would have a lot more detail. It would get in, it would get more into, much more into materials. It would probably need to be subject more to formal design review, because it would have a lot more detail. The form-based stuff we have in here would be something that we would look at, just on building permits, like we do for other things, you know, setbacks, you know, just the other fundamentals. So, we tried to move in this direction, noting that some areas of our community where we think were form-based is probably most applicable, already have some design guidelines in place, such as Washington and Bridge District and West Capital. So, we've tried to walk the line here without, you know, getting too prescriptive in our zoning code from, from a design standpoint, given that we do have different areas of the city that already have some of their own criteria. So, this would come in more primarily in places where we have almost no design standards, you know, whatsoever. We tried to have a zoning code that works, you know, citywide, but recognize our city is, you know, is very diverse, that's why we're doing this, we're going to do the Washington specific plan. Hopefully, we'll be able to update the West Capital guidelines here in the near future. So, this was our, at least was our initial attempt to try to get in, because some of these concepts, you know, on paper, because we, our current zoning code has none of that in there. It's, we certainly could do more, but this was the level we thought was enough as a basic, you know, standard in our, in our zoning code. More detailed design standards could be left to specific plans and design guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 form-based is a trade-off between more design about what, the form of the development, and less about 100-year-old usage distinctions. And so, form-based codes only makes sense if you pull back on the, on the other elements, or just adding more form requirements, or more design review like things, kind of defeats the purpose. As we're continuing to iterate on this one, this is one, I mean, you mentioned it, that this is one we need to, you know, this one would be coming back. I definitely want to. I mean, we've, I've been pushing on form-based codes since 2004, I mean, pre Charlene Hamilton even. And, you know, we, so, but we can only test if we're doing it for real in areas that really matter. And, you know, honestly, some of our, you know, the, our, we make fun of the Northwest Village, what is it, Creole, something Creole, it's a special kind of Creole.
It is, yes.
It's a special kind of Creole, though, right? But, you know, so, we, you know, we have our 18-year-old design concept for what that district should be based on. And, but honestly, I'd rather, it'd be better to let people do, you know, experiment and match up with today's market and what have you. And so, I wouldn't put too much on our existing design guidelines, is that, despite the work that we put into them, that they have to always trump a form-based system. So, I'm encouraged that it's here, that, you know, we are putting the toe in, but I would like to, to give us checkpoints and criteria, so we're able to see, can we, can we turn the knob more and more each time, to create the option for a form, for a form-based code, which is pretty esoteric, but I mean, it's, I think even the stuff that we were doing on breweries and some of the other areas, I think, are taking advantage of the idea that it's just no longer the case that the strict separation of uses, where use matters and design doesn't matter at all, or form doesn't matter, it's just not, doesn't match today's reality. So, we would open up, open up some of those. So, supportive of doing that. The, on the fences, are the rules the same everywhere, then, in, under, under the current zoning code? Every neighborhood has the same rules with respect to chain link fences?
No, they aren't. The framework plan, when it was first, had its first approved circa, it was in 1994, prohibited chain link fencing throughout Southport. That does not apply elsewhere. So, we have, we have had some different standards in different parts of town, and part, at least where we, so when we started this, was, well, you know, is, does it make sense to unify that? That, you know, ultimately, you know, wasn't the case, and wasn't the recommendation of the planning commission. But for the, for the, that's the primary difference, for the most part, height limits and setbacks and things are consistent citywide in residential areas.
So, if I'm, if I develop a piece of property in the Washington district today, it's brand new, and it's all, it's all, you know, condos or whatever, is it, are chain link fences allowed?
As I've gone through this, I don't believe the specific plan currently prohibits them in Washington, as an example. There, and the zoning, I know current zoning does not either. But that could, that could be a topic for the specific plan update, is looking at fencing standards for that neighborhood, if...
Well, I'm kind of less asking about Washington, I mean, I'm asking Washington specifically, but for the purposes of understanding, there's a, there's a, there is a place-based element to this, and different neighborhoods have different, have different characters.
Yes.
And different, you know, for exactly, you know, for exactly what Ms. Ramsey was describing. If you choose this neighborhood for this set of conditions and, and expectations, and so, it's not always the case that every rule that we have should be applying citywide. Or necessarily, even the case I was giving with Washington, was it, was not an existing home, but, but a new development, you know, brand new, brand spanking new development project, whether that could have chain link fences. To me, that, the answer should be no in those, in that case. But that argues against some sort of citywide, in all cases, rule. So, I think if I were to come back at this issue, I would, I would be identifying those, the time, place, and manner, essentially, of when we, when as a city, we would care about chain link fences. And that's not going to be the same in every single place, or for every kind of, every kind of development. I ought to be able to articulate that. So, I mean, and I just want to say, on this issue and the RVs, you know, this comes from a long tradition in the city. This is not an invention of Seamus and David and Charlene and the staff, like, kind of coming, cooking up these ideas. When we incorporated it as a city, you know, the, you know, it's the very first planning and general plan efforts in the community, the community workshops, and, you know, Sandy Tuttle was a planning commissioner, you know, in those early stages, were, were trying to raise the image of the city in profound ways. And they were things like chain link fences, but there was an understanding of what was, what the reality was. But aspiration was, you know, wouldn't it be great at some point if we have a city that doesn't have chain link fences or what have you, or boats and RVs in the driveways, or no adult bookstores, or no, or not so many billboards on the freeway? And, and it reflected an aspiration in a community to stop being disrespected by... And, and it reflected an aspiration in a community to stop being disrespected by our neighbors and by each other, that we, you know, we wanted, we wanted to, now that we were a city, we wanted to be something, you know, cleaner and brighter and what have you. And so, that's where a lot of this comes from, and, and it's not a conspiracy inside the staff, it's not, it's not a city that's not listening to people, it's a city that listened very clearly to loud, almost unanimous voices in the city about all of those things. We did deal with adult bookstores, and we did deal, you know, with a bunch of those other issues, but the issues like this had to be put off because, you know, we have folks who have chain link fences and RVs in their, in their yards. My, my, you know, my impression of this issue today is that our need to, you know, upgrade and our image is not what it was in 1987, when we incorporated. You know, we're not, we're not the most disrespected city in the region. You know, people here are proud in every single neighborhood of the community that they live in, so I'm not necessarily opposed ever to taking up these issues, but I don't think the, I don't think the community imperative is there any longer, in the way that it was, you know, 30 years ago, when there was a, a very strong community movement to try to deal with the visual, visual blight, for lack of a better word, in the community over the diversity of land uses. So I, I think the planning commission did the right thing. I'm not in a hurry to take this back up again in a year, though, but not because I'm necessarily opposed to it, I just don't think, I don't think the need is what it was, once was, and it's not, it's definitely not worth the heartache and the, you know, the kind of, you know, testimony that we've heard tonight, but also the planning commission has heard. It's not worth it, in my judgment, to keep fighting over that any longer, as long as we're able to assure that in places where, where this is not the neighborhood norm, that we're not, we're not opening the door to, you know, to this, to this. So, I mean, I lived in Westmore Oaks for 20 years, with, and with a few of those years with my boat in the driveway, I mean, I get it. I couldn't afford an RV and a boat, but you know, y'all fancy here. So I get it, and I could, and even if I could afford to put it, you know, in somewhere else, I, I mean, that was, that was my boat, that was, that was my, it was a big part of my identity, and I get it in the neighborhood. So, so for me, I totally understand why staff has proposed this, and why the commission has spent so much time focusing on it, makes a lot of sense, and it was the public will of, of all of those general plan processes that engage so much of the community. But I don't, I personally don't think it's the, the time is ripe for this, or that it's necessary, given, given what, given what we've accomplished together throughout all the neighborhoods of the city thus far. So on the, on the parking and the transportation side, if I could, Mr. Tilly, so the, first, I'm completely 100% supportive of the unbundling. It's already actually pretty normal now. I mean, it's, I mean, it was, it was a radical idea a few years ago, but it is pretty normal in the, in the urban core of both cities for this to be, to be, to be the case, but it's exactly essential. I mean, we've had these debates here, where folks have come to council and said, you know, how, how could you make me pay for street parking or for a meter or what have you, and without, without even realizing that the reason why their rent is so much lower than the same project somewhere else is because it doesn't, they're not paying for a parking, for a universal parking space. So having more clarity for consumers about what their, their choices are really does make sense. So I'm very supportive of the unbundling. I actually think we need to do a better job even further of, you know, when, when a, when a project comes forward and takes, takes advantage of our reduced parking requirements, either through one of the exceptions, or the adjustments, or what have you, that we, they ought to be, you know, we ought to, we ought to, we ought to have somewhere in our code that they, that, 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 that project is not, is absolutely categorically ineligible for residential permit parking. This is the other issue that we've had here, is that the developer will come to council and say, hey, millennials don't have cars anymore, and we don't need parking, so city, if you're a good city, you shouldn't, you shouldn't make us have parking. And we say, oh, that's, okay, thanks for the research and the information, fine, we're going to lower your parking requirements. Project opens, and they come back and say, oh, city, you know, there's just, you know, there's not enough parking, I can't, I can't rent out these units, you need to give me parking, and you need to give me the parking that the public paid for on the street, and give it just to my residents. And we've turned them down. This council has repeatedly said, no, we're not, we're not giving out those public spaces. But being clear in our code, that that's the expectation, that you, okay, you can build, you have flexibility on how much parking you're providing based on the market, but the public, and the public assets and the public inventory of parking is not your backstop. You're, you're making this market choice, and we're going to support you in that, but we're not, you have, you will have no expectation of being able to carve out public parking for private use into the future. So I would encourage you to take a, take a look, see if other cities have taken on that issue or not, but it would, it would have helped us many times in the debates that up here, and some of the expectations that have been set, in the same way that unbundling, I think, solves some of those issues. Then the, the last question I had is, you have the bike, we have short-term bicycle parking and parking spaces required, what have you. Do we have, is there, are there provisions here, and I've, I've read it, but there's a lot of different places for cross-referencing, for, for shared mobility, for person, for micro mobility options, scooters, bike share, you know, other forms of mobility that we can't currently envision? Are there provisions here with respect to those?
Yeah, we have, we have had car sharing provisions in our code, we put that in three, four years ago. We're, we're rolling that over. We're also including EV charging in our parking stuff in here now. And so I, I don't think we've addressed scooters just yet, but that's something we can, we can accommodate as well, to the extent they would be onsite. Fortunately, they're, I think they're fairly small, but we wanted to make sure we had strong bicycle parking, long-term. We have car share providing, and we can reduce parking matter if they provide car share. So we've, we have accommodated those things, but we'll look at that further before we return.
Yeah, I, I, that's great. I think it's the, what we're seeing from other, the cities that have already eliminated scooters, and the ones that are now making the, the next evolution to where the environment, the scooter environment is not so much chaos, as both, as scooter companies and riders and cities have kind of figured it out, more and more cities are, you know, the, the regularity of scooter parking is, is, you know, hitting an equilibrium point that was not the case six months ago. But for that to work, there has to be, both in the public realm and on the private realm, you know, small areas that are, that are marked off where, where the expect, the expectation is that, that scooters are going to park in this. It's, scooters are just the 2018, maybe early 2019 example of micro mobility, but, but we don't want to, I don't, I think we want to be careful not to set up an environment in the future where all the mobility alternatives are the responsibility of the public sector, that if you're building a project, this is not, I'm talking about a single-family house or anything, but if you're building a project, that some expectation that there will be, you know, a space for, for micro mobility options, including, but not necessarily limited to bike share, would serve us well, and not, and not end up at a point where we have insufficient space for even the small parking that needs that those devices have.
Okay.
Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, I just had a question, because I saw it in the, in the report from, and you just touched on it, which was the car sharing.
Yes.
Because in the, in the report, or in the plan, you, you refer to, on page, I'm sorry, page 41.
Yes.
And you get the car share, but you also, I'm trying to find the exact, I think you said that if there's no car sharing, to the evidence of the director, which I'm assuming is you...
That would be Ms. Hamilton.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, so Charlene, so some, if it can be proven to them that there's no car share service, that would take, you, you lot, you say you can, you can use a lot's spaces for car share, and then, but you said that if there's no car share program available, you can use it for regular parking. I'm just trying to, trying to make sure that there's an, I think that's what it says? I'm trying, I'm sorry.
That is largely what it says, and that's what's in our current code, we put that in there, you know...
But they, they will still be marked or reserved for those car share services, because it's sort of the same argument we've been having down here, is once you give them parking, taking it away, how's a car share service going to come in if they say, well, there's no parking, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, we'd still want those to be signed and available for car share. You know, Zipcar was the, was all the rage for a while, and it seems like that's sort of, you know, gone a little by the wayside, but then other forums are coming, are coming back, so we want to maintain that, but if, if, you know, this is just sort of a, you know, an out is not the right word, but if, if, if when a project comes online, if there's not a service available out there...
And I understand it, I just want to make sure there's a mechanism to reel it back. And that, that's the issue, because if they come, you know, we didn't anticipate having jump bikes the way they are, and they, and they're here, and now we should have more parking spaces, or bikes. So I just don't want to get to a situation where, well, you know, somebody's saying, well, you're using that for regular parking, and then wait, you get the same residents coming here, wait, you're taking away our parking for this car share.
Okay.
It has to be marked, and there has to be a mechanism to make sure we get it back.
Okay.
Because we want those services here, especially in urban areas where we're, again, the mayor painted the right scenario, is, right, we're banking on density and, and not as much parking.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandeep?
I just, talking about guidelines, framework plans, et cetera, that are more restrictive, I think, I just want to make sure I know where that piece is in this, and it says, where conflict occurs between the provisions of the code and any other city ordinance, chapter, resolution, guideline, or regulation, the more restrictive provisions shall control, unless otherwise specified. Is that, is that where one would understand that, gosh, I live in this community, and so therefore I have a more restrictive code over me?
Well, that, that's sort of a catch-all we have in there, and it's, it's pretty, pretty common to where, you know, if you do have something that appears to conflict, the more restrictive would apply. So that's, it's pretty rare when that becomes an issue.
I'm just thinking about members of the general public who may or may not know that there's a plan over their property, or they're subjected to something, so I'm just trying to figure out how that is, is conveyed to folks.
Well, it would be if it was something that the city enforced versus something that was private. Example of this that came up, I was recall, is at the Riva condominiums, they had a, in their CCNRs, they had a provision that permitted, prevented people from having home-based businesses, but yet our, our zoning ordinance, you know, fully, fully allowed and encourages that. So we were approving those business license applications when they came in, and if people had to deal with their homeowners association, their CCNRs, that was on them. So the other thing that came up was, back in the rivers, the original PD used to require a use permit to have a home-based business, which, you know, was really unnecessary, so we ultimately did away with that. But that was an area where folks were having a conflict, but the conflict was with, between what the city enforces versus what they're, they may have in their private CCNRs and other homeowners association regs.
I guess I'm just trying to think about how to make it clearer to residents about what kind of area they're under, I know, or what kind of guideline or framework they're under. I know that it makes it complicated, but the discussion here tonight, if someone's listening and wants to do a chain link fence in their home in Southport, that that's not allowed, but I'm just trying to figure out how you get that, how that gets out to people.
Well, we probably should, you know, make these things available more graphically about different neighborhoods, and what may, make sure it's clear that this is the Washington specific plan area, this is where the Southport Framework Plan area is, this is Plan Development Number 21. So we've, we got rid of a lot of that with the general plan update, some of those old PDs, deliberately, because some of them were really dated. So really, there are, there are a handful of areas that do have an overlay above and beyond the different zoning regulations, and it's primarily Washington and Bridge District and a couple other areas. So I'm visualizing more, a more graphic way to convey that for different neighborhoods. I think that hopefully the folks can relate to it that way.
Yeah, I think in a perfect world, this would all be understandable to any resident, that they understand what pertains to them and their property, and their neighbors, and so forth. I'm just thinking about how to get rid of, you know, some, eliminate some conflicts between neighbors, et cetera, that happen. I'm sure, I'm sure that the city gets called for those, and perhaps it's not necessary if there was more information.
Yeah, no, we're always obviously available here and through the West SAC Connect to be able to answer those kind of questions, we do get them frequently. Fencing is our number-one call we get, and it's usually between a couple of neighbors who don't necessarily get along, so that's our, by far, our most frequent call, but we always want to be able to, and our hope, our hope was that this effort would help with that by making it, improving upon what we had, which wasn't bad, but it was, started to get a little dated, and so we're hoping this has a lot more plainer language, and hopefully is more readable, and then the interactive version online hopefully will be the, the real key to this one.
So we talked a lot about the content of the, of the proposal, but this is the zoning ordinance modification proposal, or whatever the P in ZOMP, what the next translation point is, the most exciting zoning ordinance modernization we've ever done. And, you know, the, you know, one of the trendy things in zoning, in zoning codes right now is the algorithmic codes. And, so you described that, that, you know, that you're, you're working to make, make sure that the, the zoning, this, the modern zoning code is available on my phone, so I can, you know, look up the thing and whatever, and that's, that's great for the kind of access that was described, but algorithmic codes are intended to make a lot of this, make it possible for, for applications, for software, for other things, to be able to do this stuff directly and not have to go to the counter and do much of other, so there's a whole lot of things, as I'm sure you know more about this than I do. Is this project advancing our code to a point where it could be truly coded, I mean, not, not the word coded in the zoning sense, but where it could truly be coded in ways that would allow for some of the, the interpretations and that sort of thing to be done, you know, mechanically or by software?
Well, our, the online calculate, the online version, it will have some calculators in it to be able to calculate parking, floor ratio, other things of that nature, that will be, you know, you'll, you'll need a couple of inputs, but then it'll, it'll, it'll be able to calc those things for it. That, we're going to have, I think, three different calculators in there to start, and then we can always add more along the way, that, you know, really try to not just, you know, take it off the page, but when it says how many parking spaces per thousand, well, then you can go, and well, I, my building's 10,000 square feet, so I can, you know, it'll tell you in the real world what that is. And the thought was, if you're, you know, a real estate agent, or a commercial real estate, and you're standing at a property with the tenant, potential tenant, and you can look up the zoning, and it says, I want to do this, it says, that's okay, and how many parking spaces do I need? Well, how big's your building? Well, it's X square feet, here's how many parking spaces that you'll need. So we're really trying to bring that information, you know, those things we typically talk about at the counter, you know, to, out into the, out into the real world, in a real time.
Yeah, I would just encourage you to, to, you know, to stay, if, if you're not already, to stay, to get plugged into, you know, into the blockchain, machine learning, you know, that those, and Seamus is smiling like he's, he just came from a conference or something about this, but, you know, that, you know, kind of looking towards the encoding of a lot of this work, so that it, so that it, to improve certain development certainty, predictability, the kinds of issues that Councilmember Sandeep talked about, and reduce, drive down the cost of, of, of building and development, particularly in the affordable housing space. But, I mean, this is a, this is a relatively new field, and it's probably much, too much to call it a field. And I'm not suggesting we'd be on the bleeding edge, but I think looking for opportunities to, and make, and to, where possible, make sure our code is constructed in a way that make it possible for it to shift to that, to that, into that form, would be, would be a useful innovation.
All right, other, this is just a workshop, we're not voting on anything tonight. Are there any other comments or feedback?
I just had one brief. I don't come from a planning background like many of my colleagues, I think the mayor and I are the only ones that don't have the prior planning commission experience, but I will say that, looking at this, having not looked at many of these, I found it to be very user-friendly and easy to follow, and I appreciate the way it was put together. And so, I mean, I hadn't planned on saying that, but in, you know, flipping through this, I just wanted to give kudos to the staff for all your hard work in making sure, because if it's easier for me to understand, it's probably easier for a lot of our constituents and people in the community who just want to flip through and learn on their own, and that's really important, that this be something that's easy to communicate with people, or try to interact with it.
Yes, thank you. That was, that was one of our primary objectives, was proving just general readability, especially for folks who, you know, don't live and breathe this stuff.
All right, there's sufficient feedback?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is coming back to us.
And it will come back to us on January, 10, earlier schedule for January 16th.
Yes.
And for a public hearing, yes. All right, thank you. That brings us into item 19, which is a workshop on the Parks and Open Space Master Plan Update, the Capital Improvement Plan Funding Strategies. Ms. Michael?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Tracy Michael with the Parks and Rec Department. This item is a workshop item on the Parks and Open Space Master Plan Update. The effort's been underway almost as long as the zoning ordinance modernization project, and we've shifted gears in the process from data collection and initial planning to developing our 10-year capital improvement program, and some financing strategies to go along with it. So what we're hoping for tonight is feedback from you on our approach to developing the CIP, our recommended funding strategy, based on input received in earlier workshops, and then also feedback on some draft criteria we put together about how we might start thinking about prioritizing our projects. And please note that while we haven't provided you with a detailed project list or cost estimates, we will be sharing some information with you this evening for context for our discussion. And all along, our goal was to create a plan that's visionary, but is also a roadmap for Parks and Recreation projects that's financially sustainable and one that can be realistically implemented. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Svetz with Prose Consulting, who will thankfully be able to walk us through a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Tracy, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you again regarding the Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan. I'm sorry, I don't have a ZOMP name to it yet, but maybe we'll come up with something like that as we go forward. So, so just as part of, you know, a quick agenda in terms of what we're going to cover, really, a really quick synopsis of the work completed to date, just revisiting some of those emerging issues that were presented to you way back in your strategic plan earlier in the year, a draft capital improvement plan, and most importantly, funding strategies for this draft capital improvement plan, and then, of course, some next steps. There we, oh, it's going to skip on me.
You want to go backwards or forwards?
Trying. So just as a quick reminder, you know, we had prioritized the community needs based on a bunch of different data sets. And in fact, we had gone so far as to cross-tabulation these based on households with young kids, households with teenagers, empty nesters, seniors. And for the most part, those priorities pretty much aligned across your community. But again, the top priority facilities or amenities were really trails, nature parks, passive recreation, and covered picnic areas. Athletic fields also translated pretty highly, especially when we start talking about level of service. Priority programming, community special events, adult fitness wellness, outdoor environmental programs. And another set of work completed today, I mentioned, level of service analysis. We're aligning this with your General Plan 2035 policy document, which guides you to five developed acres of parkland per thousand residents. We have taken it so far as to break that five acres into the different park classifications that we walked through last time. As far as your current population inventory, grand total of about 72 acres short, but as I mentioned, you also have additional needs related to athletic fields and covered picnic shelters, just to name a couple. And then looking forward 10 years, you do have 472 acres of parkland that is undeveloped. So it is set aside. So this is not really about land acquisition again, it is more about the development of parkland that you have at your disposal. This still leaves you about 15 acres short and primarily in the neighborhood park classification. And we also need to make sure as we move forward with the development of new parks, that they're very carefully integrated, meaning you simply are really trying to put amenities in your parks that are most desired by your community. We also completed the equity mapping. We did a series of these maps across different park classifications and amenities to start to get an understanding of gaps and overlaps. Additionally, we did this with your existing park system and then also overlaid for all of the different future parks, how those, the development of those ended up kind of closing gaps. Again, this is just an example of what that looks like. So the emerging issues, again, very similar to what you've heard throughout this process, trails, trails, trails. And even when you look at one of your top priorities over there, it's the implementation of the Bike Ped Master Plan. Economic development through park development, where are there opportunities to have the synergy in which true park development contributes to the economic development of your community? The Recreation Business Plan Update, simply, and I'll put a different spin on this than maybe I have before. Your recreation center, once developed, was also your community center. Since that recreation center has opened, you've had a community center open. So it should basically make sure that you understand the primary functions of what your recreation center should provide, as well as then what your community center should provide in such a way that you're not duplicating those services at a couple of different sites. So as we go through that recreation center business plan, we are looking at it through that context as well. You know, school district partnerships, just a quick update on that. Certainly looking at the Charter School site near Westmore Oaks, as Westmore Oaks gets relocated into, those children get relocated into that Charter School site, there's opportunities to develop the school grounds in partnership with the school district similar to Elkhorn Park. There's also a very small sliver of West Acre Park in which, it's actually in, in the parking lot where current storage sheds are being held. That would like to have that area incorporated into the joint use agreement. And then, as we've shown before, we have that Westmore Oaks potential park development. That's a long way off as the school kind of contemplates the future of that site. But again, looking forward to the opportunity to continue to have productive discussions with regards to the school district in terms of how we can really turn potentially some of that site into parkland and much needed in that part of your community. And then simply taking care of what you already have. So the draft capital improvement plan, so I want to tee this up for you in such a way in terms of how we have developed this plan. Bucket number one, it says sustainable. It's really about life cycle replacement of your existing system. Nothing, no asset lasts forever. And so we have taken a good, hard look at the system to really understand the assets in it and what of those assets will realistically need to be replaced within the next 10 years. Bucket number two is expanded services. So looking at your existing park system, where do you have opportunities to improve services based on the needs of the community and/or opportunities to become more effective and efficient in terms of managing those facilities in such a way that, you know, that's another group of capital improvements? And the third bucket is the visionary bucket. So this is the big picture bucket, the expansion of trails, the development of new parks, the complete renovation of existing parks. So we've divided this into three buckets because, as you'll see as we go through this, there are certainly funding strategies, not just based on a park-by-park basis or a project-by-project basis, but also in terms of how these funding sources potentially can fund the different types of projects that fall within these buckets. So the assumptions we made in terms of developing the draft CIP, of course, must be financially viable. We're not in the business of creating a capital improvement plan for your master plan that contains a bunch of potentially unfunded mandates. We look at it through the lens of projects that can realistically be implemented in the next 10 years, very responsive to the data and feedback, the priorities of your community, consistent with other planning efforts. And we did build a 5% escalator into, annual escalator into the development of this CIP for each year. Little slow. So a look at the sustainable project summary. This is the life cycle replacement and/or existing, I guess, one of the best ways to say it, is existing commitments that the city has made in terms of funding allocation. So it's about $23 million. $10 million of that is the Rec Center Debt Service, which is getting paid through Measure K. Another $6 million ADA improvements and pavement replacement. And then 5.4 million is really that park furniture and fixture stuff that I think we all have a tendency to be, take for granted. So that could be playgrounds, benches, lighting, those kind of things that, you know, just exist in a park, but don't last forever. As far as the expanded services projects, 17 and a half million, of which about a third of that is improvements to the existing trail system. Another 3 million is really geared towards West Acre Park and a potential skate park expansion and/or redo. 2.6 million for River Walk Park dock improvements, and then 2.4 million, that kind of encompasses a larger bucket of shade structures and cyber tech trash can replacement, addition of restrooms, and addition of picnic shelters. Visionary projects, big bucket, 139 million. But 66 billion, almost 67 million of that is really geared towards the development of new parks through the development agreements in Southport. Another 30 million is really geared towards trail improve, expansion. So this is the expansion of your existing trail system in concert with your bike pedestrian trail master plan. Another 20 million is for Bright Park. That master plan has been about, it's about 10 years old at this point, and no movement has been made on that. And another 17 million geared to the waterfront parks, which really ties back to that emerging theme of economic development through park development.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So on the Southport Development Parks, which is 50% nearly of this, are those, are you saying those are parks that are already kind of baked into development agreements or?
Correct, correct. And we'll show that a little bit further as we get into the, the funding strategy, funding allocation. So the grand total, about 180 million. Just to kind of put this in context, your last Parks Master Plan done in 2003 was also 180 million. So to kind of break it down by timeframe, when you look at it for the first five years, you're at about 51 million. But of that 51 million, 30 million of it is programmed in year five. And of that 30 million in year five, about 22 million, 20 million is for Bright Park. So the first four years of this proposed draft CIP is about $21 million. When you look at year six through 10, this is where you really start to consider the expansion of your trail system and that new park development, which makes up, you know, pretty much a big chunk of that 125 million in year six through 10. So that sets the stage for the next part, which is the funding strategies. So it's great to have, you know, all of those projects, but how are we potentially going to make this happen? So our funding strategy overall approach was to develop the draft CIP and then to identify all of the other potential funding sources that are at the city's disposal, of which many of them are internal funding sources, with the lone external one being grants, and to start to allocate those appropriately across these projects. And then to identify what is the funding that is potentially needed from your park impact fee, with the understanding that we didn't want to do the update of a park impact fee until we knew whether or not it needed to be updated based on the potential allocation of all these other funding sources. So the funding strategy process, so on the right, you see all, the complete list of all of the potential funding sources, from the General Fund Facilities Fund through all the potential measures. Measure N has not been applied. It is listed as a potential funding source, but it has not, at this point, been allocated in any way, shape, or form. But we identified all of these non-park impact fee specified funding sources. We also identified at the mayor's request the last time we were here, what are the geographical restrictions associated with each of these? So if money is collected in a specific area, it potentially can only be used to fund the improvements in that specific area. So we have mapped those funding sources. We've allocated funding sources to all the CIP and estimated future park impact fee revenue. There is a 50-tab spreadsheet that goes with this analysis. So if you're really, really interested, the owner of that and the author of that is actually Tracy Michael, and she, I'm sure, would be happy to provide that for you, but along with a tutorial associated with it. So the funding strategy maps, this is just an example of the Community Facilities District, operational and capital improvements. But it gives you an idea of the exercise that we have gone through to identify specifically where these community facility districts are, the parks then that are associated with each of these community facility districts, and then are potentially eligible for either capital and/or operational dollars for the park system. Same exercise for the Bridge District and Pioneer Bluff Stone Lock areas, again, a little bit smaller area, but again, it gives you an understanding of where the money can be collected from, what that, and where then that money can be spent and potentially spent in terms of park, park improvements. And then you have a ton of different citywide funding sources, all of the measures, the General Fund Facilities Fund and the EIFD, which we fully recognize is only captured in specific areas of the community, but it can potentially be utilized citywide, provided there's an economic development component to any sort of park improvement. There's also the Cap Trade Grant Program. This is a heat map. Obviously, West Sacramento is outlined in black. The areas in red are what is potentially most eligible for this type of grant funding. So basically, the northern part of your community. So our assumptions related to the funding policies that we made prior to the allocation of the funding sources across all of the potential CIP projects. General Fund Facilities Fund, exactly what it means, city facility improvements, in Parks case, community center, boathouse, Club West, as well as ongoing O and M. Measure K, Rec Center Debt Service, as well as CIP projects that benefit kids such as shade structures, place structure replacement, community facility development, life cycle replacement, O and M where applicable. Measure E tied to trail development, trail amenities. And Measure G, which we recognize as being phased out and replaced by the EIFD. But as long as there's opportunities to do park improvements that foster economic development, it is still somewhat of a funding source for us. So new funding policy considerations that we, I guess, basically started to create some assumptions around the EIFD, as I mentioned before, community-wide park and recreation improvements that promote economic development. The caveat to that is the refining of that policy for the prioritization of the allocation of these funds. Transportation Impact Fee, all-eligible trail development as it relates to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, really looking at the recreation corridor side of the equation. So really, there's a refinement of that policy for how those funds would be allocated once the, that fee has been updated. There are settlement funds, it's one-time dollars, it's 2 million, projects that really improve access to recreation in the northern part of the community, but also potentially that can leverage other resources such as grants. Grant funding, and then Measure N, if applicable, and this has yet to be determined. So just as a reminder, this is the summary by tiers, 23 and a half million for sustainable, 17 and a half million for the expanded services to the existing system, and about 140 million for your visionary projects. Grand total, 180. So this is how we have allocated all of the existing funding sources. And this has not been done in a vacuum. This has been done in conjunction with community development, economic development, finance department, city management office, as well as Parks and Recreation. The big-ticket items, Measure K, about 10 billion of that is the Recreation Center Debt Service. So of that 14 and a half million, 10 of that is to the Recreation Center Debt Service. Grant funding, which I'll explain on the next page, is about 24 million. The development agreement funds, there's about $78 million in development agreement funds available for those new park improvements that we mentioned earlier. And then the transportation impact fee, approximately 16 million. So just some of the highlights. Grant funding, there's about 24.4 million that we've allocated. 12 million of that is for trails. And I think that's important to note because it's a high priority with council, it's also a high priority with your community. And we have actually already received this, almost $700,000 for the Riverwalk North Project. Another 8.5 is projected for Bright Park through Prop 68. And then the other two projects, Riverwalk Park, we've already received that 1.6 million. And for Bees Lake Park, we've already received about 600,000. and for Bees Lake Park, we've already received about 600,000. The EIFD, 3.7 million is what we have allocated to park improvements. And as you can see, these are projects that really help to spur economic development. Stone Lock, Pioneer Bluffs, new parks and really portions of the Central Park concept, and then 1.2 million for Pioneer Bluff. And then the Transportation Impact Fee, which is the other biggie, and that is kind of how that breaks down, Sycamore Trail, Mangering Paving, Clarksburg Ranch, Branch Line Trail Extension and Pioneer Bluff Trail. So the Park Impact Fee assumptions, it's based on the current fee with a 3% annual escalator built in. It includes development projections for the next 10 years, assumes current discounts remain in place for West Capital and Washington, and includes projects that typically pay PIF, they're PIF-eligible projects. The Strand, Southport Developments, Washington, 2415, and then Commercial, Office, and Industrial. This is the projections for the Park Impact Fee for the next 10 years. Residential is residential for neighborhood parks, residential for community parks, potentially 50% credits, but this is what is the latest projections as of last week for the Park Impact Fees. About 3,800, almost 3,900 units that would collect through, $31 million. And then, this is not to say that this is all of the potential housing units that you would have in the community, but this is what is, you know, Park Impact Fee eligible. Commercial, Office, and Industrial, again, these are not all of the potential square footages developed in each of these three categories, but the city's best projections in terms of what is Park Impact Fee eligible. So it's about $32 million in Park Impact Fees projected for the next 10 years. So how did we allocate this information? So here's your buckets, and here's your, the first column next to the bucket names is that total of the projections that we came up with for each of the CIP buckets. This is how we have allocated the other funding sources. 19 million for Bucket 1, 14 million for Bucket 2, 115 million for the visionary projects. How we have applied Park Impact Fee funding, about 600,000 for your lifecycle replacement, almost 3 million for expanded services, and another 24 million for your visionary projects. Really, the only, the thing that's unfunded is lifecycle replacement. And I think that's really important to note because lifecycle replacement never stops. So sustainable projects, lifecycle replacement projects using a Park Impact Fee are typically not used for lifecycle replacement because lifecycle replacement never stops, but Park Impact Fees eventually dry up. And so though there has been some funds committed to the Memorial Park ADA improvements, we are taking a stance at this point to say that we are not going to apply Park Impact Fees to lifecycle replacement. The 18 million of the PIF is allocated to improving the existing park system, and that leaves a projected balance of about 4.6 million at this point. The numbers are still potentially being refined. Our prioritization criteria that we've initially established, and I think there's more detail in your packet, but immediate projects, really lifecycle replacement, health, safety, ADA issues, benefit-driven projects where there's opportunities to either use projects that are partially developed, they meet the community's needs significantly, and/or they potentially provide a catalyst for economic development. And then opportunity-driven projects. Westmore Oaks is a really significant opportunity-driven project, but it's actually not included in this CIP yet because it's just too nebulous at this point to kind of put our hands around and put a number to it. And then, of course, and this almost should be number one, the financial capacity to not just fund the projects to construct them, but also the long-term O and M associated with it. Simply, you can't afford to take on a project that you can't afford to maintain. So a quick summary, 10-year CIP draft, 180.4 million. Only 3.5 million is unfunded, and that is lifecycle replacement. Other funding sources, 83% has been allocated to your park, or to the CIP from other funding sources that are not Park Impact Fees. The Park Impact Fee, we're making the assumption at this point that it remains the same for the next 10 years. Measure N is not contemplated and not factored into this funding model. And then new funding sources, this does not consider any potential new funding source for parks, especially related to lifecycle replacement. So our next steps, we're doing this presentation now. Complete the CIP funding assumptions in January, operational staffing assessment February, organizational capacity to implement the plan in February, and then really kind of rounding out the plan and coming back to you all later in the spring. I almost feel like this should be questions, concerns, comments, suggestions, as opposed to just questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Sandin?
This is incredibly creative to me from my perspective. I was relieved to hear that the departments are speaking with each other about the use of some of these funds, because I can imagine, at least from our seats, transportation impact funds, EIFD funds, we actually, I think, can use those for other things, too. So I think it relieves me to know that there's some discussion. I'm not sure, I'd have to look at trade-offs for us, what we're not doing in order to really kind of embrace this completely, but I'm happy with the creativity. I like to have a rubric, and I like to have a guide to move forward, so I just, I just am kind of grappling with some of that right now.
Comments? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, there is definitely a lot of information to digest. But I must say that I think you did an excellent job in the comprehensive analysis of all the needs citywide, and also in areas that I've heard, you know, areas that we need a lot of improvements, such as the Bright Park, and real happy to see that that's included in the initial one-to-five-year plan, and looking creatively at funding sources so that we can get that achieved in the near future. Probably outdated by now, you know, just probably long overdue for the residents there. But also wanting to see some outreach or some education to the residents of what the plans are, and making sure that they're aware as well, that there's some planning and efforts, and there's some thought being put into this, and so that I can, you know, get more input from them. I'll definitely, you know, share this information. It's hard to, in reading this report, I think I gained a lot more understanding from your presentation. It was very good and helpful to understand. I think it was hard for me, looking at the maps that were included in our reports.
Sure.
I was trying to figure out what the boxes meant for a long time, just looking at it. But yeah, and I would like to have more information that you had described on, you know, if, reading it in the presentation, I think that might be sufficient, just to find out where the funding sources are going to, you know, pay for some of these expensive projects that are definitely needed, and looking forward to continued discussions with you on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, I appreciated the presentation and very much, because there was a lot of information that's not in the staff report. So I probably would have had more questions had I had a little bit of time to sort of really soak in, and sort of still sort of soaking in, because I think, and I think Councilmember Sandin caught up, but I'm just going to kind of, look, this is a really good way to, I appreciate a good methodology to kind of get to showing the funding is there. But the underlying assumption here is that, you're right, are there trade-offs we're giving up, that we're assuming on all of this? And because this says two things for me. One is, what are we going to give up? Is there something we're giving up? And the assumption is, is that they are talking, and I would want to know kind of what it is, particularly around all the Measure G, EIFD funds, because those are also slated for infrastructure, especially in certain areas of town, especially Pioneer Bluff, with the bridge contemplated or coming, and there's just lots that we don't know around those areas. So what worries me about this plan, because you're saying is, I think what you're saying is, we don't need to change the Park Impact Fee.
We just made the assumption right now that it has not changed. We're not saying that it doesn't need to be changed, but we're, the assumptions that we have made after allocating the additional, all of the other funding sources, is that right now, we haven't contemplated what an increase would be at this point. So we've kept it static for right now.
You've kept it static, and the assumption is, is we've, we're agreeing to the policy choices of the use of those funds for other projects that we haven't seen. Is that a fair statement? So if we allocated dollars from, your suggestion here is either through Measure G, EIFD, or some of the other funds that we have available to us, that there is that amount available.
Correct.
Free and clear. But there's, but we have, have we made policy decisions on those things?
That's.
So that's kind of where I'm getting at. Like, I'm trying not to be suspicious of this, because it feels like, oh, we got it all funded, and everyone's going to walk away saying there's 140 million dollars of parks, and we just need another 3 million more, which equates to about the amount we generate out of Measure N, which isn't contemplated.
Correct.
So I'm just careful of this. Look, it's a really good methodology going forward on sort of how to look at this, because you do contemplate all the areas, but I'm just.
I think one thing, and I think the one thing that I think would help this whole conversation, is if we had put in a column that said 10-year projections for all of those other funding sources, and then to be able to say how much of all of those under funding sources we have applied to the park projects. And I think that's a really simple thing that we can turn around and provide to you all as a follow-up to say, here's what Measure K looks like for the next 10 years, and here's the amount of money that, a total amount of money in Measure K, and here's the amount of money that we have proposed for the park, for the park projects. And do that for each one of the funding sources that you all have policy decisions to make around.
Correct. And I think the other part, too, is the assumptions, is even on the, on the Park Impact Funds, and a 10-year projection, what will it take for us to achieve that? I don't, I don't know. What's the growth rate in Southport contemplated? That's, I'm assuming that means a full build-out of Southport over a 10-year period?
We have all of that back detail to how all of those numbers were derived for each of the potential housing developments, the projections in terms of number of housing units being proposed in each year, and how that fee gets applied, and how it's calculated for both neighborhood parks as well as community parks.
The other part, and I, so where we're headed, I think this is a question, that if where we're headed is that that background information comes to us so that we can make an informed decision about how, you know, finalizing this plan in January, I think, right?
Spring.
Spring?
Yeah.
Thank you, I feel better now, because we have a bunch of other discussions around this necessary.
Right.
If the next step is to kind of get to those and understand where the trade-offs are, where the potential trade-offs are, and get an understanding, then that is where I'm, to me personally, will want to go. Because I really worry about, again, this is, we are making choices as we go around, you know, Memorial Park and the ADA discussion we had, we're making choices, which I'm fully supportive of, but I'm also, like, want to be conscious of everything going forward, and the community's expectation around, this is, these are really big dollars, and really big dollars, the last time we updated it, and that hasn't changed. And I don't mind being aspirational and about what we can do, but it's just, I really, I'm going to really have to dig in a little bit around kind of how we're going to get there, because this is, it's a big number, and we, just, on the surface, I don't know how, I don't think 3 million dollars is the number delta. I just, I'm having a hard time. It's one, that's our only delta, given all these assumptions. But again, that's the process we're going to have in front of us, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could just interject here, too, I think it's important to point out that on the Park Impact Fee itself, this process is going to inform any changes to that fee. I think it's, there's an awareness among the council that that fee has been a challenging number for quite some time on particularly infill development. So the goal of this overall process, part of the goal is to try to keep the fee as reasonable as possible. So I just thought that was important to.
Which was, I haven't brought up yet, because that's what I'm alluding to, is that this is what we're getting on 10-year projection, but I know that fee and others have been in question, so.
Right. Okay. I really like this report, and this approach, and all the caveats and all the questions that have been raised, I think are right on target, but it's that we have the framework to be able to ask these questions. So Tracy, thank you for the work in the 50-tab spreadsheet and all the background that's gone into this, all the other assumptions, because this is a really complicated linear programming, you know, it's a gazillion different constraints for a variety of funding programs, a bunch of different priorities, all of which have to line up. And the way we've traditionally seen them is, you know, the city manager and the parks director bring one project at a time, and say, we really want to do this project, and guess what, we found 5 dollars in Measure whatever, and there's this other grant that we might be able to try for, and here's the thing, and we vote on it. But we don't have the, any sense of the long-term program, either for parks or for those funding sources. So this is calling the question to a little bit, to some extent, around that process, but that question's never been possible to really address in the way that we've approached this before. So I, and so I really appreciate what's been, what's been laid out, and the various lenses on the same problem, the same, the same issue from a prioritization perspective, from a fiscal perspective, from a geographic perspective, and from a use perspective, and drawing that all backwards to the objectives that we laid out, that were informed by the, by the public process, and all the engagement and work that went into that. Because at this stage, we're not in that process anymore, right? Now, the implementation, the financing is not a, and this, well, the remarks are made early in the evening, it's not a going out and asking people, hey, what do you want? Right? That's only one of the criteria is what we want. It's also what can, what can we afford based on what programs are out there? What can we afford based on where, whether this project, this particular park is in a community facilities district or not? Whether this park project or recreation program project is in a zone that has the right income levels in order to qualify for a grant? There's a million other of those constraints. So it's not, it is not a wide-open, let's have a hearing and ask people to rank the projects. And I'm reminded of what Governor Brown's, you know, he did his exit interview basically yesterday, and it says something that really resonated for me after this year, which was, you know, focusing so much on trying to make people happy by promising, and then even delivering all of this stuff. He says, frankly, there turns out there's a downside, the more you do, the more the people feel empowered to demand that you do even more, and that's been a challenge in our city, which is that we've been so successful in some very high-profile ways that we've created pretty much zero expectation of any kind of limitation. Pretty much, there's no sense that there's not, if something's not happening in the city, there's now a sense that it's because somebody, we just don't want to, or we didn't hear that it was a need, as opposed to every other city on the planet, which is, okay, yeah, you can't do everything, there's a budget, there's limitations. And this, so this framework, I think, really drives at that, and the charts and the maps and other things, explain that in a complicated way, because it is complicated, but as simply as can be understood in a way that's fully transparent. So I appreciate the rubric for that, both for us and for members of the public to engage, but engage in a way that is informed by the fact that this is a financial and engineering decision. It is not, it's not a needs assessment alone. Needs are only, needs and desires are only one of the, of the 10 criteria that are laid out here, and if the. at the, and at the stage of implementation, they're really not the most, they're not even close to the most important. Everything that's in the Parks Master Plan, in the Open Space Master Plan update, those are all highly desirable projects in the city. Now it's a question of what can we actually deliver? And so this is, this is essential in order to accomplish that. It's not, it's, of course, it's not perfect, and the data is going to, it's going to, it's going to live. Like, I think the, the projection of grants seemed unusually conservative for people who like parks, right? Because most of the grants that were articulated, there were grants that we already have, or are this close to having. And most of the, most of the projects in the, in the, in the update don't include any grant funding at all. We've been very successful in grants. So, you know, over the 10-year period, of course, we're going to see a lot more grant funding than is in that projection. But I appreciate that, that rather than, you know, in year seven, you know, assuming that there's going to be a $180 million grant that we receive, there's realism in this piece. And so as we are able to get grants, it'll, it'll increase our power to be able to do even, even more. And I also, you know, given, given the needs in the city and the development climate, that trying to keep the, trying to keep all the fees as reasonable as possible, and where possible, where it's possible, make, you know, reduce as well. And I don't know that this is one of those fees that can be reduced, but we need to be looking at it, because there may be other fees that we're going to have to increase, while also still making it possible to build affordable, you know, affordable, affordable, small A, affordable housing and affordable small business opportunities in our city. So this is start in that, in that direction for us to be able to engage that conversation. And I, and I think that's really useful from a policy perspective and for a community engagement, so that we can take up exactly the questions that my, that the council is raising, that I think are right on target. Because I, you know, I saw $15 million of transportation impact fees, and I, we definitely have a lot of other things that we want to be spending transportation impact fees on. So we'll want to have that debate, but I'm glad you're signaling that debate to us now, as opposed to when we have a bright and shiny park that we want to build, and we're, like, we just could just get that over the line, and we don't see that that's competing with some other, or in this case, trails, it's competing with some other transportation need as well. So thanks for the, thanks for the work. This is, this is, definitely, I can see the Erin Laurel, Tracy Michael world of spreadsheets in this, in this, in this, in this framework, and it's very much appreciated. Now, we're, when, this will all roll up as part of the, are we publishing the final?
It'll come, it'll, we're going to work through January to kind of refine some of these numbers, work through the operational side of the equation, kind of, the, for the most part, the, the plan is written with the exception of kind of this capital improvement funding. So then there's the editing back and forth, and kind of bring it back to you and...
And when this is done, the whole plan will then be a...
Yeah, probably in March, exactly.
Okay.
Sure.
Tracy?
What we're hoping for is feedback from you on whether or not all of the funding sources that we're exploring are appropriate. You know, are there any funding sources that you just, you prefer us to maybe not look at? You know, we're continuing to sharpen our pencils and update the numbers, and working with other staff and other departments that are also working on their own sets of fees. And so in many cases, trails is one of those, it's, you know, it overlaps both the TIF and the PIF in a lot of different ways. And so, you know, we're working closely to make sure that we're not double counting costs and projects. But if there's anything that we really should take off the table, we love that input now, so that we can incorporate that into our refinement.
Well, I would say for myself, that it's, there weren't any that I would take off the table altogether. And Measure N, Mayor Minna come on the table, and Measure N, you know, half, half public safety, half inclusive economic development, and we have, you know, some framework about what that means. And so it's possible that that could fit in this rubric. But I guess, sort of conceptually, I would not approach it with like, what could we get away with in terms of funding sources? Because those other funding sources aren't state grants. Those are, those are funds that we need to deliver on what those, those funds are for.
Right.
Whether it's the E I F D, which, the E I F D only works if we actually generate economic development that increases tax increment funds. So it, and same with our other funds. So as, so, so E I F D is a good example. So yes, if it's, if it's a project that is, is going to, you know, achieve as good as any other E I F D project, the E I F D is objectioned, it absolutely should be there. If it's just, well, I could construct an argument for why, you know, it's related to economic development, then, then no, it shouldn't be. And same about transportation. If it's a trail, you know, let's, let's see what it does for circulation and mobility, and for, you know, the sorts of objections that we're trying to achieve in our transportation plan. So yeah, it should be on the table, but whether or not it's going to, it's going to demonstrate that it can compete on the, on the, on the criteria and the policies that have been identified either by the council or in the ballot measures for those funding sources themselves, I think.
And I think I need more information about the budget overall, just to get additional background. E I F D is an area that I have a huge learning curve on, and just for the purposes that it could be used for. I mean, I have different perspectives on what I think would be a value for the, you know, for the expenditure. And so I'd like to explore that a little further, and probably would be able to provide more of a broader response on that in the future.
I don't, no, I agree, I agreed with the funding sources you have identified, and sort of the same approach to Mayor's outline. It has to make sense for, for the purpose that it's stated, and don't start from the low bar of like, maybe against, I just agree with that concept. There's nothing here I saw that, like, no, kick it out. The only one I thought about is Measure N, because it's just so new.
Yeah.
That having it here, optics-wise, just for me, public's looking at, oh, we just passed this based on X. We still have some probably policy work to do around that, but that's the only reason I would say maybe just for now, if you have it as, if available. So just wanted to make it clear if it's available.
So it's actually about the completion of the compiled report, because I would hope that we'll have the opportunity to include a foreword or a dedication in that report to Cindy Tuttle.
Absolutely. She promised she'll come back for all of the future workshops.
I'm only saying that in order to give us the opportunity, because this is Cindy Tuttle's last city council member as Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Services, and I know there, there are some comments. So this is the, this is the moment to make them? Councilmembers, Sandy?
Well, I want to thank Ms. Tuttle for your leadership. You leave a huge legacy here. You've brought us new ideas about funding, and how we can actually make projects, actualize projects. And then I think we're, we're so fortunate, because you have served on this council and served as mayor of the city, you have this understanding that as a staff person and working for the county, that, and labor unions, you just have, you've brought this breadth of experience here that has been invaluable. And I'm really going to miss working with you. But you, you leave this amazing legacy, and I'm grateful for that. And I'll miss you.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Well, yes, I am going to miss you very much, but I know I'll see you around. I just want to say that your personality, your warm personality, your enthusiasm to serve our city, your openness, your ability to explain everything clearly, has been extremely helpful for me as we did our review of what is going on in the city, and just providing, just your honest, you know, reflection on what, what it is that is going on, and just helps me to provide that, you know, get more insight and understanding. As I started out here, I haven't worked with you closely on what you've done here, but I can see that you leave behind a legacy of high standards for future, future people that are going to be, you know, carrying, you know, what you left behind, and you've done incredible work, and I'm very appreciative of it, as well as I know a lot of other people that I have spoken to, and what you've done in Memorial Park are extremely appreciative, because that's, that's near and dear to many people's hearts, and you've carried it well. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Mr. LaDesma?
I have my guitar in the back, and I thought I'd bring it out, and, and you could sing your own, thank you to. So Cindy, I just, you know, I agree with everything that was then said, but you have been such a valued member of the leadership team here for, not just us, but just watching your team. And I know you had a team member I'm close to that was there for a while. Just the leadership you have showed into that team all the way through, every one of your team always approaches us smiling, and optimistic, and eager, and willing to take on big challenges. And you have cultivated a culture within that, that department that is truly appreciated and is very visible. Tracy's just done a remarkable job of bringing this project up, and, and seeing to the finish line, and she's done every other, but I know she's having a coach behind her and showing the way. And your, your experience and your, really, your friendship has been most valuable to me. Your, it is around, I know you've sat in this chair, and this chair, but you've been here before, and your ability to communicate to us with questions, and some very tough conversations we've had to have with the community, whether it was around Memorial Park, and, or the Nest, or whatever, you have, you knew how to talk to us, because you knew you've been here, and how the things we should focus on, and you kept the team focused on just deliver and communicate and talk to the community. And that has been such a big part of the success here, and what I've appreciated the most. And I really value all the other leaders in this, in, in city staff, because they all have amazing skills. And I will miss you. I'll see you again sometime. I think I'm probably no rehearsal last night, but we'll have one soon. But, but like, it's just an amazing job you've had, and the legacy you have is just here. You have an amazing folks and friends at Yellow County, where you worked for a number of years, leading efforts there, and a lot of confidence in those folks. And it really goes to kind of who you are as a person. I know you have a great life ahead of you. We will miss you here, but you, I know you won't miss it too much, coming here, as you go to Bellingham, as you go to Honolulu, and everywhere else with Thomas now. And it's just been such a pleasure getting to know you, having that friendship, and watching you just really bloom at this point, where like, it's time for you to leave, and watching your staff. Yeah, I know you've had a lot of pride around your, your team, and, and it shows. So thank you, Cindy, for everything.
When City was appointed Director of Parks and Recreation by, by her not-related city manager Marty Tuttle, I know there were folks that are like, where did this come from? This woman doesn't know, she's never worked in a parks department, much less run one. And, you know, how did this happen? Is it because she's a former council member, and she got treated favorably? No, it was, it was actually quite the opposite. If anything, Cindy, your appointment as Parks Director was, was more challenged by having been, you know, an elected official in the community. But Marty was insistent, because Marty knew what I think all of us know and knew then, that you can do anything. And for all the heart and all the negotiating, all the politics, all the, just the spirit, and the leadership, and the hardcore budgeting, all the elements that make a successful director in any of the departments, you've brought to this work, as you have in every other thing. So you weren't supposed to be a Parks Director, but you've succeeded mightily at it. Before that, when you were, you know, leading the delta and water policy for the county, before you had that job, I don't recall you doing anything on delta or water policy or counties. When you were a labor boss, you know, for a, for a really tough construction union with a, with a really, with a crazy team, you had never done anything like that before. And when you came on the city council, in a council where there wasn't a lot of different people, never done anything like that, and Planning Commissioner is just a regular citizen joining up at a time that this city was forming, and everything was on the table. Every single step of your career has been, you know, something wildly different, and you've grabbed it, and you've made it your own, and you've succeeded wildly in doing so. And all, those have all touched our community, and they've made us a really, you know, much stronger place. You were an inspire, inspiration to me when I first got involved here in this community. You can tell from the wall what the, you know, the city was pretty, the city government and city leadership was, was kind of, you know, a little bit monochromatic, all with pretty much the same chromosomes and whatever. And, and, and seeing, seeing somebody who stood out was different. I think Cindy was the first one who hadn't been born in the city, or kind of close to, you know, to be elected, and to take on things that nobody else saw. You know, Cindy was the one that led the work on the very first childcare ordinance in the city that became, ultimately became the, you know, the award-winning universal preschool initiative here in the city, because of her leadership, when no one listened, and nobody thought it was a priority, she wouldn't give up. And time and time again. And she, you know, were effective lobbyists for the city and the Capitol back then. So I've just been always impressed and inspired by the, your blend of political and policy-savvy, and heart, and humanity, and ability to lead and inspire other people in so many, in so many different ways that, that make them proud of fulfilling a life, a life purpose in their work. So we are all going to miss you, up here, and everybody in the community that knows and loves you in all these different roles, or has just heard you sing, and heard the power, the power of your voice, and the joy, and the, and the passion that you bring to, to so many people through, through, through entertainment, too. So best, best of luck. And of course, we're going to have, we'll be dedicating this master, the Parks, this new Parks Plan to your leadership as well. So, all right, so this, but this one's just a workshop, so we're not voting on anything. I think you've, have you gotten, Tracy, do you have sufficient feedback? All right, thank you so much. All right, that brings us to item 20, our last action item, which is present, or last subject divided, which is our presentation discussion of the Sycamore Trail, Phase Two and Three Pedestrian Overcrossing Aesthetic Treatments.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, good evening, Mayor and council members, and welcome, Councilmember Guerrero. Okay, I have a few slides. Most of them are pictures, and I'll try not to speak as much. It's very, very difficult to follow what just transpired with, you know, Tracy and Ms. Tuttle. My presentation tonight will include first a brief overview of the project, namely Sycamore Trail, Phase Two and Three. Then we'll focus on the bridge aesthetics, for which we're seeking council direction on. I also have with me tonight Dennis Haglen and Brian Hanson from our consultant design team. Okay, this map gives a visual representation of the overall Sycamore Trail. Phase One is currently under construction. That is north of West Capitol Avenue and extends to Rice, Rice Avenue. Phase Two is, is sort of the big-ticket item, and it includes the bridge or pedestrian overcrossing over US 50. And Phase Three goes through the Westmore, the current Westmore, K-8 school campus, extending, extending down to Park Boulevard, near Stone And this is a further breakdown of our project. The segment to the north, in the red there, is essentially Joey Lopes Park connecting to the bridge, and the Pet Overcrossing is the yellow box there. Note that we're leaving the, you know, the campus, the current Westmore campus, because the actual programming and coordination with the Parks Department is in flux. We are not designing the trail across there, but we are designing and intend to construct the southern segment of Phase Three, which is the blue rectangular portion. We are, to provide connectivity to the, to the streets, we are widening or adding sidewalks at the very northern end of the southern trail, and then sidewalk at the southern end of the Pet Overcrossing. These are some typical trail amenities. We intend this to be a multi-use, actually, we want it to be a multi-generational friendly trail. That's one of the comments we received at some of these outreach meetings. You know, and the reason, you'll see, as we look at the actual bridge and the landing, we're trying to make it, the grades, the slope, which is 5% or less, to make it ADA accessible. And that's, that's the multi-generational friendly aspect of the trail. A big component of enhancing the trail and activating is, is adding lighting for safety, and then formal plantings that we can maintain. This is a bird's eye view of US 50, where the trail or the bridge is going to cross. This is a bird's eye view of US 50 where the trail or the bridge is going to cross. It is a very prominent location between Harbor Boulevard and the Jefferson Boulevard, on ramp, off ramps to the freeway. And that is the primary reason that we are, you know, taking into consideration some additional costs for aesthetic treatments. This is the southern landing of the bridge itself as it crosses Highway 50 and meander to the east and then circle back. Across the bottom there is a sidewalk connecting to the existing street. We will be providing gates to gain access to Westmore Oates, again, because the programming of that campus is in flux and we understand there will be a transition as the school district is contemplating shifting the students to another nearby campus. We are keeping that in mind with our design. This is the southern segment, you know, because of the opportunity to possibly separate the bicycle pathways from pedestrian pathway to get a, I guess, better experience at the trail. These are some of the design elements that we are contemplating. You know, seating, some hard, you know, decomposed granite walking paths in addition to the multi-use trail. Now, we're ready to focus on aesthetics. To give you a little background, we held a joint meeting comprised of the Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation Commission along with the Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Commission. That was held on October 16th and we had a great turnout. The project team is very grateful for those two commissions to, you know, to help us organize that meeting. Likewise, we also held a meeting with the Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission, November 5th. And again, we had six members there. And at those meetings, we were mainly seeking feedback as far as what they prefer, as far as the large, larger general themes and the look and feel of the bridge itself. So, the next few, the next five slides will give you, you know, a sort of a overhead view of what the five theme options are. I'm not the landscape architect, so I don't have the words to describe what HL, our calendar associates has done. Perhaps Drake Haglin can help me. But, you know, this is really for you to look at. This is more or less a standard bridge. Again, note there is a identity element to it, West Sacramento. Throughout our commission meetings, we've heard from multiple commissioners that there is a desire to identify West Sacramento on the structure. Lighting was also mentioned. In addition to the safety lighting, there's potential to do some backlighting, possibly in different colors. But those are specific elements that staff will be asking you for direction on. This next option, again, is the amount for the port. Note again, the identity element. Again, the look and feel is a little bit different. This one is call the basket. If I may go back a couple of slides, note on the upper right, I have a, in brackets, the plus 1.2 million. Let me go back to option one. Sorry. Really, this is the additional cost beyond the baseline cost. If we were to go and just build this bridge and build the entire project with no aesthetic treatments, these are some additional costs that we would have to consider to get something that looked like this. Okay. So, the option one would be additional 300,000, the river. Option two is approximately the same, 400,000. Keep in mind, right now, our project is at 65% design, therefore, we don't have, you know, the bidding environment can change and we really don't know how the bids are going to come in, so we are mindful of that. Option three and the two that follow are a little bit more out there. So, the railings, which comprise of the majority of the costs, you know, will, as you can see, this is a 1.2 million dollar additional option. Again, this is, this is a very unique structure. The landscape architect actually does not recommend attaching names and West Sacramento to the structure because it sort of speaks for itself. And this is another interpretation of the weeb, and this is the most expensive structure. So, in summary, this is sort of a matrix of what we got back from the three commissions and we had them, you know, pick their, basically the top option. And as you can see, the first option, which was the least costly, had seven votes. And it was obvious that the commissioners had the project budget top of their mind. There are a few commissioners who wanted, you know, the project to really stand out in the region and, you know, they voted for option number four. This slide gives an overview of project timeline. I think, you know, project team has done an awesome job as far as moving this along. We cleared environmental. We've had to deal with a multitude of stakeholders, including Regional SAN, RD 900, the school district and Caltrans, which have sort of all the permits that are required to build something like this over the freeway. But thing I want, one thing I do want to point out is the construction deadline. Our urban green grant requires that we complete construction by June of 2020. So, that makes this a very tight schedule. I included this slide just to give a background of the outreach, of the community outreach that we've done. This seems to come up, you know, a number of times. We held a meeting at Joey Lopes Park in April of 2017. We had a community open house in January of this year that had a great turnout. In addition, we had, we sent out 1,700 mailers, 600-plus emails. We even had an online community questionnaire with 333 respondents over a two-week period. But in summary, most of the attendees at the, you know, community meetings and the community open house were very positive and in favor of the project. Eighty percent of the comments received online were very positive and supportive of the project. Of course, the prime concerns were safety being number one. You know, good lighting and adequate fencing and railings and aesthetics were also mentioned. So, this is my last slide. We are looking for council's general direction on the five options, keeping the budget in mind. We will incorporate whatever comments you may have on aesthetics and try to incorporate that into the design. Our current project estimate total is at 7.6, approximately 7.6 million. We actually have an ATP grant application that we hope to find out the result of at the end of January. And if we're successful with that, then we should have 7.85 million dollars for the project. Now, keep in mind, that does not leave a lot of room, you know, for the aesthetic component. You know, we included the more expensive options for council to consider. And then lastly, we would like to move forward, again, because of the tight schedule, to finish design, finish engineering design and actually present the design before we bid for construction. So, with that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or discussion?
Just wanted to, I think, agree with the, the majority of the commission's recommendation is option number one, the river. I think that was, the one that they had felt was most feasible as far as fiscally at this point in time. And that was, I agree with the recommendation.
Ms. Ledesma.
So, sorry, thank you for the presentation. And so, just so I'm clear on the budget side, so we have the budget for just the completion of the bridge, no aesthetic element, which is why we have the grant application and, I guess, to help complete that thought. Is that a true statement?
We have a, again, because we're only at 65%, we don't know what the real numbers are. The bids could come in a little bit lower. You know, right now, it looks like we have $220,000 for the aesthetic, for construction. That's the difference between our current budget, if we get the 1.5 million dollar grant, and our current estimate.
Okay. So, then my feedback is option one. What I would say is, for two reasons. One is obviously the lowest cost and another port is right behind it from an aesthetic perspective. I kind of like the port, but, and it can make sense thematically as you're making your way towards that, that area, right? The port district and, but, but to me, because of the gateway nature of the bridge coming into town, having a really identifiable part of who we are, which is on the river, makes sense to a degree. But what I ask for is, while it's aesthetically pleasing and simple, and it's what I see on the renderings here, if the opportunity arises to do more by way of backlighting, by way of adding other elements to it that would make it, you know, rather than just the cheap aesthetic design we could afford, is there other things we could do if that budget increased by, again, the next one up is another, I think, $100,000. It's $400,000, I think, what you estimated on the port. So, either way, we only have 220,000 now, so it doesn't make any, I just would look, that's my feedback. And look for the aesthetics that could add to just, you know, kind of the river rendering that's on there, either by lighting or by colored tiles, or I don't know, I'm not that, I'm not that person. But I think you get my meaning about how you can improve that concept. So, that would be my feedback. And again, I know that you have a ways to go to kind of understand the building costs, but obviously, we don't have a lot towards it to kind of go towards the 1.4 million dollar aesthetic. So, anyway.
Councilmember Sandeep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and showing us all the options and the thought that's been going into the project. I, when I look at this bridge for me, and I know we're talking about aesthetics tonight, but safety, obviously, utility and the cost are all, are all important. I think, however, we would be losing an opportunity if we didn't do some kind of branding or some kind of celebration of this new structure that's really linking the north and south of our city, just like some streets we have. But this is actually, I agree that, one, the first option in terms of not blowing the budget up and notwithstanding that there could be other things that do that, but I think we would be losing an opportunity if we didn't do some kind of branding. So, I'm glad that at least that option is there.
The port design didn't really say port to me, really. I mean, it worked if you, if somebody stops on the freeway and I get a chance to explain to them how this is the port, but it didn't say port, port to me. And the basket one seemed like it wouldn't age well in terms of maintenance and, so, especially for the money. So, of the options, I also preferred the, preferred the river, the river one, and given the cost. On the cost piece, I'm curious that, so if, if the issues with the school district, you know, if the school district refines its plans and the gap between Phase Two and Phase Three, we're able to close for, based on the outcome of whatever the school district's decisions are, will we, will we have any, will we have to go out and get another grant then to close the gap between the two elements of the trail? Or is it just that the particular alignment's not covered? Or are we, are we building two separate trails with a gap that's unfunded?
In reality, I think the design that cuts through the campus, I think that's probably best designed and incorporated into the programming of the use that's going to go there. We will definitely provide pedestrian access to the bridge and to the northern portion of the trail, which is at the south end.
Okay.
So, there will be sidewalks that go there. But unfortunately, the school currently has a MOT or bus or corporation yard to the south. They are contemplating relocating that to the northern parking area. And we can't really build something across their driveway that they utilize for the bus access.
Kind of unrelated to the design, I just also, you know, I'm very, very encouraged to see the, all the positive feedback about the project. You know, when we began this, in some other cities in the region, trail projects have generated a lot of, you know, a lot of fear, usually not just, and here, I think the residents see the, on all ends of the trail, on the trail itself are seeing the value of it. And that's partly due to good outreach and so it's good to neighbors taking leadership in their own, in their own neighborhood on Deerwood and elsewhere to identify that. One of the things that's come out of that is an interest, and this is not a public works issue as much as, well, maybe, as a planning issue, is an interest in being able to do trailside decks and, you know, put, and for residents and for folks on the trail to be able to create, you know, essentially, trail furniture that, so I think, five years ago, we were worried that nobody would want the trail next to their house. And what, you know, part of this, what's surprising through some of this outreach is that folks are, you know, at least, we're starting to hear bubble up, some folks who have ideas about things that they'd like to, they'd like to be able to formally be able to front onto the trail in interesting ways. So, it's not related to the bridge design, but I do think, you know, we ought to, we ought to be, you know, exploring and potentially creating some ways for residents to do that because it could be a really interesting trail, you know, different kind of trail that we haven't, that exists in other, in other cities, not in the region, but that we haven't yet had where residents fully embrace and it becomes an amenity that adds to your, you know, adds to your property if you're, if you're going to open up your backyard to the, to the trail and install, you know, install a deck or whatever. So, Ms. Guerrero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to add to that, you know, since Mayor Cabaldin mentioned about, you know, what other areas are, you know, what the people are reflecting as far as feedback that I have heard in the last few months and public safety. So, to the extent that we focus on that, lighting, I think, is a, is a big issue. And in speaking with the police chief, I think, making sure that we have access and review periodically, so whether it be another department to, you know, we have the operation and maintenance funding set in place to ensure that there is safety for anybody going through the trail.
Yeah, and the sidewalks off the trail that lead, you know, ultimately lead into the Port Viree district or elsewhere are essential because the number one, I mean, there's a baseline level of safety that can be provided through security measures, but by far, the most important security, the safety measure is use. And so, you know, so what we don't want to have is a trail that is completely encased and it's only useful if you're going directly from Joey Lopes Park all the way to the Barge Canal. There ought to be ways for folks to be able to use it in a way that maximize eyes on the trail. That's the, that's the number one way that we can achieve, you know, the level of safety that both residents nearby and folks that are using it, kids and others, will expect and need to have. So, okay. Do you have?
Remind if I say something? My name's, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name's Dennis Haglin and Drake Haglin Associates. I just wanted to make clarification. You know, when we looked at the base cost of the project, that actually includes a lot of landscaping. of landscaping and lighting. When we look at the different elements of, say, the river concept or the port concept, you know, we're adding things like, you see in the aesthetics, the different fencing, but we're also doing entrance monuments, some column stuff down below, maybe some, you know, sidewalk improvements as far as texturing, concrete, that type of thing. And it is a 65% design level estimate, so I wouldn't get too concerned about the $100,000 difference between the river and the port, because, you know, we can take, one of the, one of the additions of the port is that railing that you see that's actually bent in. You know, it gives it a nice user experience as you're going across the bridge, but if we were to straighten that out, those costs of those two, the river and the, and the port would be very similar. So I just wanted to make that clarification, as far as the cost go. We can, we can play with it if you like, one of the concepts over the other one.
All right.
Thank you.
I think you mostly heard river, so. All right, thanks very much. All right, and that brings us into council calendar, and if somebody can let the city manager know that he can return.
Yeah, I just, I just texted him.
Oh, okay, all right. Council calendar, Ms. Grantlin.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So, starting on Friday at 5:00 PM, City Hall will be closed for our annual holiday closure, and we'll be reopening City Hall on January 2nd, the morning of January 2nd. We'll have a phone response team over at South River Road, though, and so any calls that come in will be routed over there to be able to answer any questions from the public.
Are there other questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I want to start by, they can, the council for the gesture earlier to adjourn the meeting, and seeing Lead Officer Monerosa's honor, I've been in touch with the chief this evening, and I just want to pass on that the family is especially grateful, and so is the chief. It's been a tough time for the department, and I just wanted to point out that there's the memorial service this Friday at 10:00 AM at the Russian Baptist Church at 1,000 Sacramento Avenue, it's the corner of Jefferson and Sacramento. Just also that our full support is with the Monerosa family and the department at this really difficult time, so, thank you. On a couple of other items, the State Public Works Board, as a follow-up to the council's action on the Indian Heritage Center, last Friday approved the same set of documents, so that project is now moving forward. There'll be a stop at the Oversight Board. If you remember what that is, the successor agency Oversight Board for the county now, there's, one of the documents has to get their approval, according to the Department of Finance, so we're going to go ahead and do that, and then we'll be proceeding to close the vesgrove. Speaking of the closure, my plan is to be off for the first week we come back, so Amanda will be in charge, and I'll be back on the 8th, or I'm sorry, I'll be off through the 8th. And that concludes my report. I just did want to add that, once I get over the fact that Cindy will be the first department head to leave me, yeah, I just want to echo all the comments that were said tonight. I know we're going to talk about her tomorrow, too, but really appreciate her leaving a department in very good shape, in addition to giving tons of support to me over the last three years, and through the transition to my new role, and I've learned a ton from her, and just really appreciate everything she's done for the city and the community at large over the last 35 years. So, thank you.
City attorney report?
Attorney report.
Staff direction members of the council. We have no future agenda requests, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I'm sorry, we are recessing into closed session.
Oh, that's right.
The motion to adjourn will be placed at a later time, so we're going to recess into closed session to consider the one item of significant exposure to litigation. We will return for the purpose of fully adjourning the meeting. At this time, we don't anticipate reportable actions, so in case you're deciding whether or not you want to stay. So, with that, we'll adjourn, I'm sorry, we'll recess into closed session.